We're going to have an invocation today by Pastor John Johnson from Desert Hope Presbyterian here in Florence, and then the pledge by Supervisor Goodman.
Good morning. It is always a privilege to be able to be here to open this with prayer. And I have to have a moment of personal privilege, since I'm sure there are no controversies. I'm flattered that so many people came to hear my 20-second prayer. Let us pray. Oh God, it is always appropriate to begin prayer with thanks, and too often we fail to give thanks to the freedom of this nation that we celebrated yesterday is what you wish for all your children, which is to say for people everywhere to possess, but that not all do so. As these men and women who are in positions of responsibility and authority, with power to use or abuse that authority, meet today and make decisions, we ask that whether or not they worship you, that you will indeed work through them for the greater good of the people of Penal County, and that the people will indeed show support and appreciation for their efforts to be faithful servants, that you will indeed serve those people on your behalf and not that of other interests. I ask this in the manner of my faith tradition, which may not be that of everyone, but I offer no criticism or slight to those others, as I say, in the name of Jesus Christ, amen.
Amen.
Please join me in the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, united, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I'll call the meeting to order. Do we have Supervisor Miller on the phone?
Yes, I'm present.
Okay, first up, we have call to the public, and I have a bunch that probably want to speak on item number 10, and you will get a chance to talk on item number 10. These are the ones that want to just talk generally, but if I mention you and your item number 10, you might want to defer to them. So first up, I have Vicki Smith.
Chairman Chertie and fellow Board of Supervisors, I didn't want to speak. I just wanted to voice my opposition to the proposed taxes. And that's it. This isn't the time to raise taxes when we're seeing so much increases in the grocery stores, at the gas station, and if our county truly is in a position of growth, we should be able to find those taxes from those newcomers. That's my opinion. Thank you.
Thank you. Mike O'Brien.
Excuse me. I did not come here today to throw rocks, point fingers, or make any accusations. I came here in hopes that I can point out something obvious that's been overlooked so bad. If you go to YouTube and look up those that have passed on, okay, you're going to find that there's over a thousand of them, and God has brought them all back. And they all have one thing in common. Every one of them that died says, "I could see my body," which means they didn't die at all. It's obvious. And so I've been praying about it, and I've asked God, I said, "Why do we have this earth? And why are we all subject to this if we can't die?" And He made it obvious to me that what He's doing is, He's separating the people that are worthy to go into heaven. If you have no integrity, no honesty, He doesn't want no part of you. And that's basically what we all need to think about, is that this is a test bench. That's all this earth is, nothing more. A plain old test bench to see if we're worthy to move into heaven or not. If we decide we want to steal an election, sorry, you're going to wish you'd never were born. That's all I got to say.
Barry McCain. And as you come up, if you could give us a general area that you live in.
Good morning, Supervisor Chertie, Board of Supervisors, staff, and friends. My name is Barry McCain from the city of Maricopa now. Hope everybody had a fun and enjoyable 4th of July. I had time to reflect. I usually do this on Veterans Days, my toughest, but I was thinking that, as I said before, I was drafted out of China High, ended up on the USS Kitty Hawk with a race riot because Admiral McCain, Admiral John S. McCain II, was flag officer. I understood that. But with this race riot that's never happened before on a naval vessel, I learned a very important thing. My job is not to control other Americans, but to inform other Americans. And I believe I've done that as an activist, registered lobbyist, and a freedom writer. We must stop this political polarization by collaborating with the other Americans, not finger pointing at other Americans, because we're not at war by ourselves. Supreme Court Justice Antonin Scalia described what an American was, and I agree with him. What an American is not by name, bloodline, or even birthplace, but the belief in the principles of freedom and equality that this republic stands for. We as Americans should hold our leaders accountable by using candor and kindness to be fair. We must hold them accountable because we want them to be effective. Brutal honesty is easy. Suffering in silence requires no skill. Achieving absolute honesty while maintaining complete respect requires skill. But I'd like to thank Supervisor Goodman for his town hall, just happened to be where I grew up, in Queen Creek, and the efforts that was done, I think it was very important. We need to learn how to encourage each other, not discourage each other. Thank you.
Todd House.
Good morning, Chairman, gentlemen. I'm here this morning to rise up to bring a couple of issues. One I'm going to talk about, I am going to talk about 10, because I'm only going to talk at this time, not both, briefly. I believe that Dana Lewis would be a great overseer of the Recorder's Office and the Elections Department with her vast experience in the elections in Penal County. She would serve as a great safety net to make sure that we would have fair and adequate and very trustworthy elections going forward. So I'm all in favor of making Dana Lewis in charge of the Recorder's Office and the Elections Department. She's got all the authority that she needs. She wants the job. She's got the ability to direct and make sure things happen, and she has the history that's very important to understand how the Elections Department needs to be run. Secondly, I stand before you because it's an issue that you can't change today, but I wanted to voice an opinion. In District 5, the people of District 5 are hurting. Inflation is rampant, run out of control, and having problems. I would like to see that maybe next time, think about lowering the property taxes to put more money back into the taxpayers' pockets, to make sure that they have adequate money to go forward with their lives and can live the life that they've become accustomed to, and they can do that. As far as the elections building goes, there are other ways to finance that, to make that happen, to get that done. The elections building is very important. I stand behind that, that that needs to be done, but there are other financial ways to take care of that and make sure that that happens. So I appreciate your time this morning, and good luck on the rest of the meeting today.
Beverly Goldstein has to leave by 11:00. I think we'll be to this by 11:00, but if you choose to talk now, you can. And she's coming.
Thank you, Chair Chertie, and members of our Supervisor Board. I'm Beverly Goldstein. I live in Queen Creek. My comments are specifically about elections issues, but thank you for calling me, since I have a doctor's appointment. I came to say that I'm a very big supporter of using hand count for Election Day balloting, and I'm going to be looking for other voters in the county who support that and try to get together and come up with what we would like to suggest to you regarding hand counting. So I just wanted to stand forward and say I'm for that, and then I don't know exactly what I'm for specifically, but I've reached out to a group in Texas on Monday, and I asked them if I could learn more about their process, and if they would be willing to come to Penal County and either educate us or train us more on what they're doing. So I did take a little action step there. I want to talk about myself in relationship to the county activities on hand counts and other election activities. I was initially invited recently to a hand count effort, and 24 hours later, I got notice that the effort was canceled and that I wasn't invited anymore. No, I wasn't not invited. I was just, it wasn't going forward. I'm very interested in our entire elections process, and it's clear that I'm not being invited or included in some meetings that I would like to be invited, included in, and I don't know if that's a result of elected officials not inviting me, staff not inviting me, the PCRC not inviting me, but I just wanted to stand and say I would like to be more involved if I could be included. I also want to talk about the decision, or the decision on the table, to move the Director of Elections to the Recorder's Office. I'm not necessarily against it, but I don't feel that we've done a proper assessment to look at it, and I would like to see a better and more thorough review of it in the long term. I think nobody challenges the qualities and the skills Dana Lewis brings, but I don't think this decision should be about Dana Lewis. So I would like to see more in depth. And I just want to say that sometimes I feel like speaking here is like dropping information into a black hole. So I think that I'm going to want to find more like-minded members and voters in the county who hold my position, so we could come together as a group and speak on behalf of many people instead of one of us at a time. And thank you very much for letting me speak early.
Okay. As a reminder, you'll get a warning light, and then it's red light, you got to wrap it up. And also, we can't really respond unless we're called out, so that might seem like we're not responding, but we are listening. That's everybody that we have that's not item number 10. If anyone would like to speak, a call to the public now on anything else, please come And seeing none, we will then move forward to item two, which is a presentation from the CSA and Craig Sullivan. And explain what the CSA is.
Will do. I'm happy to. Good morning, Mr. Chairman and members of the Board. Thank you very much for giving me this opportunity to brief you today. I know you have many items on your agenda, and so I will be brief, but I do want to express my gratitude for having a little bit of time to talk about what the County Supervisors Association is and some of the work that we do on behalf of your county and all 15 counties. I did provide to you a report that has much more information than I'm going to cover today, and so please just review that at your leisure. I'll just hit some of the key high points. But just to begin with, I do want to thank you for your partnership with the other counties and your colleagues, Supervisors across the state. We really appreciate your partnership with everybody trying to work on important county-related issues. And I definitely want to extend my appreciation to Mr. Lou and Ms. Ryle for the good work they do, making sure that our association always has accurate information from this county on what's relevant and what's really important to Penal County. And so thank you for that. I'll move through the slide deck a little bit, and I'll move forward a pace to assist with the agenda, but I do want to tell folks who we are, because there's a lot of folks in the room. The County Supervisors Association--
Our screens are not on.
You can keep talking. You know who we are, so I think I'll go ahead and do that. So the County Supervisors Association is a nonpartisan collaboration of the 15 counties. Our Board of Directors are all the Supervisors, and what we focus on is creating a forum for counties to share best practices and information. We develop information and research, and then we serve as an intergovernmental office, largely with the state legislature, state agencies, but also with Congress. Mr. Miller, I do want to thank you for serving on our Executive Committee. I know that you're on the phone. I appreciate all the extra time that you give us, both in that capacity as well as on our Legislative Policy Committee. The balance of the presentation is about capacity development, our analytic function, and then, of course, I'll talk a little bit about the legislature. This in sum is some of the capacity development activities over the last year that I wanted to share with you. You know that we bring forward elected officials and policy professionals to meet with you and your colleagues on issues of critical importance. We value significantly what we call affiliate groups, which are our managers group, planning group, clerks group, civil deputies. These are all the professional staff folks in the counties that we try to work collaboratively with to help share information. It's a source of great value for us in our service to you, and I hope that we're of value to them. And I wanted to flag on the left our appointments and agency engagement. We do get a lot of appointments on behalf of all 15 counties. Some of those are reflected for you here. The most recent one is getting appointed to the Governor's Water Policy Council, which I'll be serving on, I know is a critical issue across the state, and I'll be briefing our client base as we go through that process. A couple of slides on our research and data initiative. You all know this well, but we develop a mountain of data. We consolidate it. We put it in visualizations that can be used to inform state and local decision-making. It's an ongoing priority for our association, and we continue to build it. So I want to touch on a couple of things related to this for you here. Our database continues to grow, and we put online tools that contain a lot of this information. I encourage you to look at our county encyclopedia, our county revenue dashboard, and our employment dashboard. I know these are tools that the professional staff uses. We are going to continue to build these elements going forward into the next year, and we'll unfold some of that as we build it out. These are some of the ongoing research projects that we're involved in. You're all aware of the work we've been doing on public safety pensions. I'm on the PSPRS Advisory Committee. Our team analyzes the policy choices they make, because you all have put taxpayer dollars into that system, and we want to make sure that you, as investors and as the folks who are putting taxpayer dollars towards this function, know what's happening with it. And so we spend a lot of time analyzing the decisions that they're making to protect your investments as employers in the system. We're also working on workforce challenges. This is not new to you. Every county has workforce issues. The legislature tapped PSPRS to look at recruitment and retention in fire and police. We are part of that work group, and through that, we've been providing some project management support, bringing in the Board of Regents to do some original research into workforce recruitment and retention. And so we'll get some of these results as we come off the summer, and we'll brief you when we all get back together. This is our work plan for those research items that I wanted to highlight for you. It just gives you a sense of the ongoing nature of it. When we meet in October in Flagstaff, we'll have identified some new research projects to bring into our work plan. We'll deliberate that with you. You'll set priorities, and then we'll move forward on the next year's research effort. I want to talk a little bit about the legislature, and I'm not going to talk about a ton of bills here. I just wanted to provide a detailed report to you. But typically, when I stand before you, we have already signedee died, and we know when the general effective date is. That has not happened at this point. All that means is that the work that we provide at the end of session, summaries of bills that have been enacted that help you all implement them locally, that work's still in progress. And so just know that that's coming. Briefly on the budget, you're all aware that the legislature had a significant amount of one-time money available, not ongoing resources, but a lot of one-time money. This shows you how those resources were expended in various buckets, and it won't surprise you, transportation, K-12, other things that are top priorities in our state. We put this graphic together for you to just give you a sense of where transportation projects, water projects, local distributions, all mapped across the state, and you can see significantly there were resources allocated to Penal County, and it really reflects just the growing demands of this community. And I saw Senator Hoffman and Representative Carter in the back there as well, along with other members of your delegation. They've worked diligently with you to improve investment in this region, and that's been a very strong partnership, and it's reflected here. These are just other funding items that came down to the counties. I did want to highlight a few priorities we were working on this year that are still to be resolved. One is related to how the state funds probation officers. The courts are statewide. We fund it through partnership with the state. There's been some policy changes that raise the possibility of shifting more of the courts' costs into the county general fund. We want to come up with a permanent solution in that regard as it relates to probation. We did not get resolution this year, so it's an ongoing item, but I wanted to flag that for you, because I know the increasing pressures of the court system into your general fund have been an ongoing challenge for all 15 counties. And we worked this year on an EORP debt payoff. EORP is the Old Elected Officials Retirement Plan. It has been determined by the courts that it must be paid. It's a closed plan. We've been trying to find a way to pay it off most efficiently for the taxpayer, and we had put an item on the table for legislative consideration this year. It did not make it into the final budget, but it's still something we'd like to do to try to save taxpayer dollars going into the next several years. These are just some bills that we ran, that I won't spend a whole lot of time on. Overwhelmingly, what the Association does for the counties as it relates to the legislature is just triaging all the bills that come into the process, and this is where we rely on feedback from all of you. We appreciate the ability to just get good information before lawmakers. It was a good year in addressing bills that were of concern, and so I won't spend a whole lot of time on that. These are just various policy areas that we work in. I see I'm starting to get the hook, so I'm going to jump right to the end. I did want, I spoke a little bit about water. I did want to flag one other thing as it relates to that. The Water Infrastructure Finance Authority, which many of the counties were asking me about last year, where resources were going in for water augmentation, about half of the deposit this year was earmarked for various water projects, so just know that. It wasn't put in the fund for future water augmentation. There were specific earmarked items, and I've been receiving a lot of questions about that. Now, Mr. Chairman, I just wanted to share various reports that'll be coming your way. This is how we wrap up the session and send out information to help your staff implement what is passed into law. So each of these reports will be coming in your email basket as soon as the legislature signee dies. And as you know, when we do wrap up one session, we need to be preparing for the next, and so we are asking for counties that would like us to consider bills for next year to submit those. By August 7th, we'll be meeting in Coconino County early in October to set our agenda and start working with lawmakers on the agenda that you all helped set. And so with that, Mr. Chairman, thank you very much for all eight minutes. I'm exceedingly grateful, but I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Does anyone have any questions or comments?
I do.
Yes.
You know, just so our public knows, first of all, I appreciate what the CSA, the County Supervisors Association, does for us in our behalf, working with state legislation and everything else of that nature. Six years ago, I remember making a phone call to you specifically related to our utility, our local utility, and you gave me some good advice and direction in helping us move forward, even to the point of let's work on legislation as well, to where the county could be a lot more involved. One thing about Craig that I've noticed over the years is that he's a hard guy to get riled. He is, what you see here today is pretty much what I've always witnessed, and that's the kind of support that we need, because sometimes it does get emotional. And it's good to see that we've got such a good individual that set the directorship of our CSA, that actually has that demeanor about him, where he actually can work with all of our legislators out there. So I just want to tell you, I appreciate you and thank you, and all of the support that CSA does, and I'm looking forward to, because that's an opportunity, all 15 counties get together, all of us, we get together, and we hash out, and we hammer. We don't come up with maybe two or three that we want to focus on when it comes to legislation. We try not to burden our legislators too much, but we come to a consensus, all of us, which is, but I appreciate you and your leadership there. Thank you.
Thank you, Supervisor. Thank you.
And like the Electoral College, all 15, the smaller counties get a voice instead of being dominated by the big one next door.
Amen.
Yes. Okay. Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, this is Supervisor Miller.
Yes.
If I may.
Go ahead.
Craig, thank you for your report. Appreciate it. I totally enjoy sitting on these committees and working with CSA. I will tell you, we come up with three, four items that we want to push through at the legislature, but I bet we spend 90% of our time knocking down stuff that is going to be detrimental to counties. And that song doesn't get sung very often, but you guys do a great job. Craig Sullivan has a fantastic staff there to look over all of our issues. So thank you, Craig, for the report and all your hard work.
Thank you, Supervisor.
Yep. Thanks again.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
And I want to thank everybody for sitting through this other stuff. I know you all want to speak on item number 10, but hopefully you're seeing your government in action as well. Next, we're going to hear from Kent Volkmer on the CSI event.
Thank you, Chair, members of the board. Kent Volkmer, Penal County Attorney. I'm making this presentation consistent with a policy that the county enacted back in June of 2017, specifically its 8-7-1, and it revolves around if, when we receive contributions, donations, et cetera, recognizing the people that actually, you know, provided those donations. Historically, we have reserved this really for those that have just given financial donations, but if you read the policy carefully, it certainly allows and contemplates those that donate their time, and that's really what we're here today to talk about. I want to start very briefly with thanking the board for having this opportunity. Obviously, it's a very full crowd. We've got our entire overflow room to my right and your left that's entirely full. There's even some people over in the ironwood, so it is certainly a packed house, and I know I'm taking valuable time up, but I do believe in this, and I appreciate the opportunity to be able to make this presentation. And secondly, I want to thank you for funding something. You know, we're going to talk about the budget. I heard, you know, in the call today to public, you know, people are saying we need tax relief, and I understand that you guys, you know, you held the boat steady, you held the ship steady, and that allows us to do certain things like we're talking right here. What a lot of people don't understand is, is we have community relations departments. There's obviously the communications department. I have a community service organization or a community relations wing. So does the sheriff's office, and it's really those people that go out into the community and really make our community the best community it is. This is a great time to remind everybody, we live in the safest community in the state of Arizona, by far a large community. It's not even close. Maricopa residents are three times as likely to be victimized. Pima County residents are four times more likely to be victimized, and it's because of volunteers. It's because we all come together and work collectively. This event that I want to talk about specifically, and I want to recognize people for, is an opportunity to really reach out to kids. opportunity to really reach out to kids. You know, I was taught a long time ago that idle hands are the devil's playground. And in the summer, there's not a whole lot kids can always do. It's 114 degrees outside. So we wanted to give children an opportunity to come together, to be exposed to the law enforcement community and all the various parts and moving parts that, that participate in there. In order to do that, though, it's a huge undertaking. And we had an absolute incredible amount of volunteerism. I think we had over 50 volunteers, people that came in and donated their time, their efforts, to make this a reality. And really, this is an opportunity, with the board's permission, to call them up, to specifically name them, and then I'm hoping to have a picture with all of them just as a token of our appreciation. And I'm just going to kind of go through our partners. So the sheriff's office was unbelievable, specifically Mark Goodman, Sally Pizano, and we call her Dead Amy Graham. She's Dead Amy because she had to pretend to be dead for like two hours while kids were laying around trying to scoop blood up and do fingerprint and DNA analysis on her. We've got the Pinell County Communications Department, Kevin Johnson, just Kevin right there, just jumped up. We, we were short somebody, and he's like, I'm here. And he spent most of the day with us videotaping and helping. You're going to see a lot of his handiwork. The cadets were volunteers, the sheriff's office cadets. Florence Unified, I know we've got Superintendent Knudsen here. We've got Principal Mr. Lopez here. We've got one of the board members, Jeff Carr, who's here. They donated resources, they put people there, they gave us access to their building, which again, we needed to do something indoor, and they gave us essentially free rein, obviously with some restrictions, but including access to their video feeds and some of the other things. And they're just a tremendous community partner, but they really stepped up here. Post Imbute High School specifically, the Post Imbute STEM Program. She's not here, and I wish she was. We have an absolute gem, her name is Kayla Cully. She is the STEM Coordinator at Post Imbute. And I'm going to make a pitch for anybody that's got high school grandkids, high school kids. Post Imbute has an absolute phenomenal program regarding STEM programming, the sciences, forensic, she has an entire forensic program. She's the program coordinator. This was really her creation. She's the one that said, hey, I've got some time this summer, why wouldn't I donate all of my time running an organ, or running an entire week-long program and teaching these kids who oftentimes aren't even from the Florence Unified School District? We had kids from Nebraska, I believe. We had kids from all over the valley, all over our county. We had about 60 kids, and I think 52 actually showed up, I think 60 RSVP'd, and we had 52 that consistently showed up. But Kayla is just tremendous. AMR came out and volunteered their time. Rural Metro, same thing, they came out and actually went through stuff. So, you know, we had a helicopter out there, they came in, they showed the way that crime scenes actually process. When they come in and they're providing these life-saving measures, and they allowed the kids to actually observe what's going on. We had Cassie Kennall, and if you don't know Cassie, she's a local Allstate agent, but she was also one of my dead victims. And anytime we need her, she's a proud member of Thank AZ Blue, or Thank You AZ Blue, just an organization that is always down to volunteer and help, and just a tremendous asset to our community. We've got Florence Copper, again, a phenomenal, phenomenal community partner, specifically Sophie Dessart, who is their communications manager. I think she's here and she's going to come up. The Spear Court, they gave us the courthouse. The Casa Grande Alliance, I mean, just person after person, and we had just individuals. Taylor Henson, for example, is just a community member that's like, no, I believe in this, I want to participate. It was just an opportunity for adults in our community to come together to open the eyes of kids. And it was incredibly well-received. And the kids were very favorable, and their parents were sending emails weeks later saying, this is so awesome, can my kids go next year? Can we do this again? How can we get more kids involved? And it's really just, again, it's an opportunity to open our eyes, and it's these type of events that make our community so great. I know that sometimes when you're sitting on the dais, you get to hear about all the complaints people have, all the problems, all the troubles they have. There's a lot of really, really good things that happen in our community. This is just one of those good things, and it happens primarily not because of me, and with all due respect, not because of you, but because of the volunteers and the people that work for our county, and the people that live in our county, and the people that love our county. And with that, and your permission, what I'd like to do is play a short video, and then while that video's playing, I'm going to ask them to come up, take a picture, and then I promise I'll stop talking for now. And if anybody has any, has any questions, I'm certainly happy to answer those.
Any questions? Play the video.
For the trial of case number CR 2023-09.
Return the only verdict that makes sense.
From hard to easy.
I'll go center, or right, I'll go right, I'll go right.
This is my radial bone.
So this is our second annual crime scene investigation or CSI event for local teenagers.
Mr. Heard got into his white pickup truck.
It's an opportunity to, to get kids out of their homes, stop playing video games for three days. They're going to learn about the forensic sciences.
Well, they just learned about the different types of patterns that we have. We have three main groups. See, I got like a sponge in the middle. We have whirls, arches, and then loops.
How to do DNA swabs. They're going to learn about the investigation process of a crime.
Anyone who's wounded, stand up, hold hands up.
And then there's actually a trial.
It will be your duty to decide the facts.
So it's a whole kind of series of events where you take a case from sort of birth to finality, from the crime occurring all the way through trying it in a truncated three-day period.
Just the funniest person you would ever meet.
Well, the first day, they're going to get to learn all about forensic science.
This one has like a little 90-degree little pocket right here. They just got done learning about ballistics, and now we've worked our way into fingerprints.
The second day, they're going to witness a mock crime.
This year, we're doing a shooting that occurs within a school compound. And it will be, they're processing the scene, there'll be shell casings, there's DNA evidence, there's a flight that's going to occur, there's multiple potential suspects and DNA evidence.
Right, I'll hold this hall right here.
And then the third day is taking all of that evidence and doing a mock trial.
The only real question is, who committed that, this atrocious crime? All of the relevant and most important evidence is going to be tried, and we're just trying to give the kids a taste of what a courtroom really looks like.
That we did attempt an interview with him.
I hope that they see that there's a bunch of different careers out there, so if they want to actually do a job like this, they can see what it actually entails.
Hopefully, they actually learn some things. They learn about science, they learn about courtroom, they learn about public speaking, all those things. The time you listen to all of the testimony, it'll be abundantly clear. My secret kind of hope is that this will attract our youth into these different fields.
I hope the kids take away a new understanding of what it's like to be in law enforcement and what it takes to process scenes.
Was it more like a mustache or a goatee?
But this is awesome, like I would want my child to see this. It lets them see, do I actually want to do this career, or is this not for me?
Chair, if the board's so willing, I'd ask maybe if you guys would step down off the dais and take a picture with, with the entire group here. We'll use Kevin again.
Can we get the tall guys in the back? Ladies, all from the front, we're going to do a couple of those here. Wow. Folks, come on over here, actually, come over on this end. Yep, you two. Come on. There you go. Right between their heads.
You made it work.
Well, you're odd man out over there, good man's all. Okay, and what a fine-looking group. Three, two, and again, we're going to do another one. Three, two, one. You know, you guys are actually all smiling. Usually I have to fight for it. Three, two, and hold on, don't move.
Jeff, can I just say one thing?
Sure.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chair. You know, if you notice, this also is a good opportunity for our, our sheriff's department to hone in on some of their skills and even emergency preparedness. That's something that's been discussed. And so when these scenarios take place, it really helps us to even be more prepared in these type of emergencies. So I think that's a great thing. And Officer Goodman, there's no relation between us. I know he, he's a lot better looking, he'll tell you that anyway, so. But these guys that spend their time and effort in our community, we really appreciate them and all that they do. Kent, all of you that did this, we appreciate what you're doing. Thank you.
Okay, on to the legislative report with Supervisor Miller, who is not here, and then Mr. Goodman is going to have a little bit of time. So Steve Miller, are you there?
I am, I am. So, thank you, Mr. Chairman. There's not, much has happened since our last meeting, as Mr. Sullivan had pointed out in his report. So I think it's, today as we go, we'll see what happens in August, when they can finally wrap everything up. But there are some loose ends out there in the budget that I think haven't been fully addressed, but they're close. So outside of that, I think we just wait and see, both on the federal and on the state.
Okay, thank you. Supervisor Goodman, you have something from one of the reps in your area.
I do, and I appreciate that. You know, I didn't realize that six years ago, when I came into office, how important our state legislators are to us in, in all the regions. And I remember, as a newly elected official, I got a phone call from one of our newly elected state officials, Representative Cook, and asked me, what, what do you want? What do you need? And I haven't had anybody except for Senator Hoffman, who when he first ran for Senator, he called me up and asked me to go meet him. And we sat down and we had a pretty good discussion about some of the things that we're faced with in this region, along with Representative Carter. And so I think the, that was one thing that CSA, the recommendation by Craig, was that get to know your legislators. They're the ones that's going to help us and make some decisions and bring some needed funds available for all of your roads and infrastructure. I'm happy to say that over the last six years, and especially here recently, this last, last two or three legislations, we have well over $100 million that the state has designated to our region when it comes to transportation. I've asked Senator Hoffman and Carter to be here today to, they actually have a presentation or they've got a large check that they're going to be presenting to, between the town of Queen Creek and, and us, the county, in regards to our SR24 extension. And so with that, if we could have Senator Hoffman, if that's okay, come forward and do the presentation on that, that would be great, him and Neil. Thank you.
Well, Mr. Chairman, Supervisors, thank you for having us. To everyone who's here from the public, thank you all for being here and being engaged in your government. That makes us all stronger. We do want to talk about the SR24, because we know that commute times take a long time getting from in here, you know, out into the valley. We know that there's road congestion, and the SR24, in addition to being one of the state's primary future economic drivers, it will employ tons of well-paying jobs in all sorts of advanced manufacturing and other very important industries. But in addition to that, the SR24 will serve as an incredibly important thoroughfare to get Pinell County residents into Maricopa County for other employment opportunities and things like that. We are proud to present an $87.5 million appropriation to move the SR24 and continue it forward over the next few years to the Board of Supervisors today.
Do we need a picture of us accepting that?
Yeah, Chairman, would you guys come down? Thank you.
Stay where you're at, lower yours just a tiny bit. There you go. And look in here, three, two. Look at that check. Three, two, one. There we go. Thank you.
Unfortunately, those phones are not going to work.
Okay, I want to commend the youngest citizen in here has been the best behaved. Usually babies can be little monsters, but there's a baby back there, and you don't even hear it. That's pretty awesome. Yeah. Yeah. All right. County Managers Report, Leo Lu.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Did you want to go ahead and skip to that? We had the presentations and then your, your district reports before that. Did you want to skip down, or do you want to go in order?
Well, it's under your name anyway, so take it.
Okay. Well, let me stick with the order, and I'll do the presentation of certificates. We have the privilege of honoring two of our employees for their long-term service. One gentleman, Jose Leva, is, I don't believe is present, but he is a heavy equipment operator for Public Works out of Arizona City, and has been serving in that capacity for 25 years. So thank you, Jose. And then we have Angie Sosetta at Housing. And I don't believe she is here either, but is Rolanda here to accept on her behalf? Does she want to, Rolanda Seifus? She is nodding either. Well, thank you, Angie. She started out in 1998 as an eligibility worker and has promoted all the way up to a Housing Operations Manager over those 25 years. So thank you again, Angie and Jose.
And Mr. Chairman, did you want me to go ahead and give the County Managers Report?
Yes, please.
I will also express my thanks to Senator Hoffman and Representative Carter for the funding for the SR24. And just for the public's information, that's to fund the intersection at Ironwood, and then to fund the facility going east from Ironwood over the, to the Central Arizona Canal, the CAP, and which then we will be able to go south from there with a parkway to get the residents of Santan and Queen Creek over onto the parkway and over onto the 24, so people can, can travel fast back and forth through Santan. So thank you again. And then as another update, speaking of economic drivers, the executives from Arizona Sonoran Copper Company, who are, have a cactus mine project, it's a brownfield project over just east of the Casa Grande Airport. Originally, they were looking at the tailings over there, and technology has improved where they could actually take and produce copper from those tailings at affordable prices on the market. And since then, as they've been doing a pre-feasibility study, they've found in the land around and underground even twice as much, more than twice as much copper than they originally thought was there. They will continue to explore, but at the moment, they're estimating 6.5 billion pounds of copper on their site. And so it's going probably from an 18-year project to, you know, a 30, 40, maybe even 50-year project, depending on how much is in there. So for the Copper State and the Copper County, it's, it's a great thing and a big find. They're hoping to be in production by 2026, if all goes well. And then I also wanted to mention, and Kevin Johnson created another video for us, but as we were talking about growth in the counties, we're talking about budgets, and as was mentioned earlier, we are trying to, as much as we can, fund our capital projects with one-time revenues, which we have been able to fund, both our elections building like that and our medical examiners building. And just for the public, as, for their knowledge, as, as we've grown as a county, we went from contracting with Pima County to perform all of our autopsies and having to travel all the way down their families and law enforcement, to doing it ourselves fully here in-house with our own medical examiners and our own facility, and built it up to the point where we can also serve others in the region that are needing other jurisdictions, other counties, and other tribal nations. And so we do have a video to honor that ribbon cutting that we had back in May.
Here for the ribbon cutting and the opening of the Medical Examiner's Building.
About a year and a half in May came, finally, it's happening today.
Old building is pretty much two trailers, but we love that place, don't get me wrong. It just outdated. We like, we old outgrow our old facility.
Boy, the old one was just so antiquated and small. They were strapped for room, and this is so nice and modern, and we're so proud of it. You hate to spend the money, but we're at 500,000 people. Where are we going to be in 10 years? We need this, and so we got to spend the money now, or else we'll have to spend it later and it'll be much more expensive.
Everything's better. I mean, just about everything, from space, autopsy, we got surveillance video, security. This is, you know, make us feel more safer to work here, and also better storage capacity, which allow us to, a little flexibility in terms of accepting case and release case. Also, we have observation room, which community partner, for example, hospital personnel, law enforcement, if they want to see the autopsy, they can come in. With separate observation rooms, it's much safer for them and for us.
A lot of the neighboring counties don't have a facility like this, and we already helped them out. So in the future, we'd like to be able to help whichever community needs this.
When I first joined the county in 2016, we have about 600 cases a year. Now 1,500. We are a fully independent office. We do every examination here in-house, and we do our partnership jurisdiction. If any cases, they want a higher level of forensic examination, they come to us. So that's why we examine more sophisticated cases and to help Yuma County and Hila County out. So yeah, not only the number increase, the complexity of cases also increase. And of course, our personnel increase, offices increase, everything's increased. A much better improvement than our old building. It's not only bigger, but also functionality, and serves the population much better in the new building.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. That's all I have.
Okay, thanks. Purchasing Division Report.
Good morning, Mr. Chairman, Vice Chairman, and members of the board. I'm Tiara Peterson, your purchasing manager for Pinal County. This is your purchasing report for July 5, 2023. First, the board has requested to approve the following contract awards. RFP 240228 for banking services and trust safekeeping services. We recommend that Wells Fargo Bank NA be awarded a contract beginning July 6, 2023, through June 30, 2026, with two optional one-year extensions. This contract will be used countywide through the Treasurer's Office. IFB 241224 for Thornton Road Interstate 8 to Selma Highway. We recommend ISX Construction LLC be awarded a contract in the bid amount of $6,524,033.04 with a contingency amount of $6 million. This contract will be used by the Public Works Department. RFP 241029 for printing, mailing, and emailing notification of property tax documents. We recommend The Masters Touch LLC be awarded a contract beginning July 5, 2023, and this contract will be used by the Treasurer's Office. Next, the board has requested to approve the following contract amendment. RFP 193425 for credit and debit card processing. We recommend approval of Amendment Number Three to exercise the optional extension period beginning July 6, 2023 with point and pay. This contract is used primarily by the Treasurer's Office and other county departments. Next, the board is hereby notified of the following change to a cooperative purchase made. PO 249566 with Ellison Mills Construction LLC for a change amount of $194,285.19 for a new total of $631,000 for roadway improvements in Arizona City, used by the Public Works Department. Next, the board has requested to approve the following cooperative purchase. 167807 with Dancin' Construction LLC in the amount of $526,313 for construction services for the juvenile hearing room renovation, used by the Facilities Department. And finally, pending approval of the resolution between the Pinal County Board of Supervisors and the Arizona State Land Department for economic development purposes, the board is hereby requested to approve the following cooperative purchase. Requisition 167793 with Wood Patel and Associates, Inc. in the amount of $158,590 for Santan feasibility study Phase 1, used by the Economic Development Department. And that concludes your purchasing division report for July 5, 2023.
Any questions or discussion? If not, I'll ask for a motion.
Mr. Chairman, I move we approve the purchasing division report as.
Presented.
Presented, thank you very much.
Second? All in favor? Aye. Any opposed? And the ayes have it. Okay, I skipped my own item on here, and that is any updates from any of the districts? Mr. Kavanaugh.
Just real quick, we've been, after the, we realized that the $98 million couldn't come to roads in Pinal County at this time. We were notified by the mayor in Maricopa that a need to have some cooperation from Pinal County in new grants to sort of maybe replace some of that funding would be necessary. And we were able to find a million dollars perhaps in two different stipends so that Pinal County can be represented as a partner in these grants. And it's important that many people or many entities as possible are associated with the grants so that the feds say, hey, local governments got buy-in, state governments got buy-in, county governments got buy-in. So we're working on that, and it's, it'll be allocated in the next two fiscal cycles, and that will help with the 347 projects. Also, the, the board gets about $100,000 a year to allocate toward nonprofits in their districts. And in the past, when District 1 was on this side of the county, we helped the fire department, food pantries, community centers, and so on. And at this point in time, we just have five, five or six, it looks like on my list, entities that are requesting. So it's, it's important that nonprofit entities in the district let us know what their needs are, and we can, all the supervisors can perhaps help with some things. So that's it.
Anyone else? Supervisor Miller?
Nothing to report on my side.
Mr. Goodman?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. We, we had two town hall meetings, which was alluded to earlier, on the Tuesday of last week, as well as Thursday. Very well attended. It was, we addressed three different things as a result of a survey that we, that we gave out to the community in Santan Valley. And the three areas were incorporation, the effects, what that does, so on and so forth. The other item was transportation. And then the third one was economic development. And so we had breakout sessions. It was moderated by a local individual that has lived in the area for some time. She was actually the first Queen Creek manager, town manager. She did an excellent job. Cynthia works for ASU now, and so it was very well attended. A lot of, a lot of discussion around the Parkway, the possibility of the Parkway, where it's going to align, and so on and so forth. We were able to answer a lot of questions and help out that and help improve some things. So, and we have many more town hall meetings moving forward, especially in regards to transportation and so forth. So again, thank you for our public and especially to our county staff for making themselves available on those two evenings to help address some of the concerns of the citizens. Thank you.
I would just say to Supervisor Goodman's Town Hall that I was supposed to be there, but it was my wife's birthday that night, and I had a kind of choice there, so, sorry. Let's see, in my district, I've got, in Arizona City, the library has been completed, and they were moving furniture in a week and a half ago, and should be opening up for business here in the next few days. We're going to have a ribbon cutting, I believe, later in the month with that, as Summons Inn Road is being completed, under budget, by the way. Even with all the issues that we had at the beginning, we'll be having a kind of a dual ribbon cutting for that, like when the light's red, run across the street, cut the ribbon, run back quick before the car hits us. And a general party going on there, that'll be fun. If you've noticed around the county in a few places, and I noticed it in my area where pavement has been fixed, you'll see a sign up there that says your half-cent sales tax dollars are being spent on these projects. That's just to let you know that we're in need of the pothole taxes coming up this next year, and that's a whole nother education series we'll go into later. Thank you.
Okay, and that was a coincidence that that check we just received was for $87 million because that's the amount that was collected from the previous tax incentive that got overturned. Recently attended the CAG meeting, Central Arizona Association of Governments, the governor sent a representative there, and myself and several others petitioned her to please talk to the governor to not sweep this money into the general state fund. That money was raised in Pinal County. It needs to stay in Pinal County. It needs to not go back to the vendors in Bentonville, Arkansas, and Cincinnati, Ohio, which is where Kroger and Walmart are from. This money belongs to the people. So if anybody out there in the audience has any influence with the Arizona Department of Revenue or the governor, let them know, let the money stay here, and let an entity like CAG decide where it should be spent. It would go to helping all of these projects, including the 24 and the 347. Thank you. Now, on to the consent agenda, and does anyone want to pull anything? We already have a request from Vice Chairman McClure to pull item number C. I would like item number W to be pulled for further exclamation or explanation. Anyone else?
Mr. Chair, item number R.
R? And anyone from the public can also pull one if they want an explanation. Okay, if not, I'll ask for a motion.
Mr. Chairman, could you repeat the ones that are pulled?
Okay. C, W, and R.
Okay. I move that we approve the consent agenda items A through AD. Make sure that's right. With the exception of C, W, and R.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Aye.
And that's unanimous. Let's go on to item number C. Mr. McClure.
Is Mr. Lizaraga here today? In one of the rooms? I don't hear any footsteps or see anybody. Oh, no. Hmm, there we go. All right. Mr. Lizaraga, I just want to thank you for being on the Planning and Zoning Commission. That's a hard job, and I wouldn't want that one. It's worse than this job some days. I've watched him from the background. I just want to thank you for being willing to step up to that position, and really appreciate it. For four, I think it's what, four years? Okay, thank you. Do we need a picture?
Any discussion or motion?
Any. I move that we approve Mr. Lizaraga to be on the Planning and Zoning Commission for the term of service. It will be from August 16, 2023, to August 15, 2027.
Second? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Aye.
And that is unanimous.
Do we get a picture? Just 'cause?
Picture?
Just 'cause.
Yeah.
What, oh, and a certificate? Yeah, that, oh, thank you. Mr. Lizaraga, come on down. Oh, the formal stuff.
Okay, it looked like you're paying attention to the background. Looked like you're paying attention. And, sorry, bear with me. And, just a tiny bit. Three, two, and again, one more time. You're really happy this time. Three, two, one. There we go. There we go.
It is a project in my district, and I thought the residents might like an explanation of what's going on and an upgrade in the bridge out there that affects a lot of people.
Morning, Chairman, members of the board. Chris Wanamaker, county engineer. So this item is an extension, an annual extension of the temporary construction easement that we have for the, or with the State Land Department to allow for the construction of the bridge. The bridge is currently on schedule to be completed by the end of January 2024 or early February. Right now, the project, they are doing forms and false work for the bridge deck. The abutments are done, and everything, like I said, everything's on schedule and within the budget that was approved.
And this is the bridge that's the back way into Queen Valley. As of right now, there's one way in, one way out, and emergency-wise, it's always good to have multiple exits.
Yeah, that is correct. And when this is done, it's going to be a great secondary access for the community. We'll actually be able to fit a fire truck across it, which you couldn't do that in the historic bridge, so it'd be great to have this project done.
And you mentioned a historic bridge, and we were able to secure pieces of the old railings, some for the Historical Society in Queen Valley, and also I was able to get some pieces for the museum in Apache Junction, and they're actually going to be making benches out of it for their amphitheater. So the bridge will live on, so that's pretty cool.
Mm-hmm, that's correct. Any other questions?
If not, I'll ask for a motion.
Thank you.
Mr. Chair, I move we approve item W as presented.
Second? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Aye.
And that is unanimous. Item number R, Mr. Goodman?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I asked this to be pulled because of the significance of what we're accomplishing, what we're trying to accomplish here. We've got Mr. Smith here. You know, we got two James, and so I'm trying to think, which one are you, Smitty or Daniels? But we've got James Smith here, Economic Development Director. If you could just come up and speak a little bit about it, and while he's coming up, I just, this is actually a result of some of the things that we've, some of our studies with retail leakage and so on and so forth, so maybe you could speak a little bit to that.
Yes, Supervisors, thank you through the chair. Thank you, Supervisor Goodman. This really is an opportunity for the county to address some of the issues and some of the needs that are in Santan Valley. So we identified, there's about 1,300 acres of state trust land along Gansel Road in Santan Valley. Santan Valley really has a need, several needs, a need for, an area for people to gather. There's been a need for parks identified, but really primarily what we're looking at here is that that, there's that $1.3 billion in retail leakage that we, that you heard about earlier as a result of our consultant retail study. And so we're really looking at, and along with, with the item that was approved on the purchasing report, a feasibility study of whether we should acquire some of this land to really kind of plan for some of these needs going forward. The county would be able to direct kind of where we want to go with, with some of the retail needs, some of the parks needs, and really kind of, really drive what we want to see in that area. So this is really an opportunity to do that. This feasibility study will be done in two parts. The first will kind of determine what's necessary, what's needed out there. We've talked about a multitude of things that could include some multifamily. I know you guys are constantly being pressured to rezone commercial land to multifamily. This could possibly ease some of that, allow some multifamily to be developed here. Again, we do need some of that workforce housing, attainable housing to support LG. They've got nearly 4,000 employees coming in the next few years, so we do have a need for, for some affordable housing. So there's a, there's a number.
So we identified, there's about thirteen hundred acres of state trust land along Gansel Road in Santan Valley. Santan Valley really has a need, several needs, a need for, an area for people to gather. There's been a need for parks identified, but really primarily what we're looking at here is that that, there's that 1.3 billion dollars in retail leakage that we, that you heard about earlier as a result of our consultant retail study. And so we're really looking at, and along with, with the item that was approved on the purchasing report, a feasibility study of whether we should acquire some of this land to really kind of plan for some of these needs going forward. The county would be able to direct kind of where we want to go with, with some of the retail needs, some of the parks' needs, and really kind of, really drive what we want to see in that area. So this is really an opportunity to do that. This feasibility study will be done in two parts. The first will kind of determine what's necessary, what's needed out there. We've talked about a multitude of things. That could include some multifamily. I know you guys are constantly being pressured to rezone commercial land to multifamily. This could possibly ease some of that, allow some multifamily to be developed here. Again, we do need some of that workforce housing, attainable housing, to support LG. They've got nearly 4,000 employees coming in the next few years, so we do have a need for, for some affordable housing. So there's a, there's a number of issues that are, that will be addressed by this study. Again, it will be done in two parts. The first part, kind of what the needs are, how we can drive and really address some of the desires and needs of the county. The second part, we'll get more into the technical issues, the roads, the infrastructure that will be necessary, and we'll come back to you for approval of that, should you desire to go forward with that. The advantage of applying, and this item gives Leo the authority to apply to purchase the land, is that, should the county not be the winning bidder, we can apply to receive those, the study costs to be reimbursed to us. So should we, should we decide to go forward but not, not acquire the land, we can, we can get those study costs back from the State Land Department. So there really, really is an advantage to filing the application. With that, I would take any questions.
I just, if I could, Mr. Chair, just reiterate the fact that Santan Valley has become a municipality without actually going through the voting process or anything else. It's an urbanized area. And because of some of the amenities and things that we do lack, that's a high retail leakage that actually goes over into Maricopa County to pay for their roads and their infrastructure. And this will allow us to enhance where the most populated region is in our entire county, to actually be able to shop at home, and less usage of going outside of our community to purchase various things, or even to go to a movie for that matter. So, anyway, I appreciate your support in this, gentlemen, and I think in the long run, this is something that would be extremely beneficial to the county as a whole.
So, Mr. Chair, I just wanted to clarify, so Senator Hoffman gave us an eighty-seven and a half million dollar check, which is very nice. He made one mistake. He said that it was to get people from Santan Valley to Maricopa County. We want them coming the other way, folks. We want them spending money here. You know, we've got jobs here, and we're trying to turn that around.
Well, that, and if I could add to that, Mr. Chair, is ultimately, that's what this will do. It'll reverse things to where people are actually going to come here. This will be, this is already a destination point for people to live. That's a, I mean, you just look around, and I think this will only enhance the ability to be able to improve the economic side of it, to where additional jobs and things of that nature are going to be expanded upon. Keep in mind, Senator Hoffman lives in Maricopa County, so that, that's...
Yeah, you buy it.
Anyway, thank you. That's all I have, but I appreciate it.
Okay, can we have a motion on that if there's no more discussion?
Mr. Chair, I'd like to make a motion that we approve item number R as presented.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any...
Aye.
Any opposed? And that's unanimous. Item number 10, and this is something that I asked that we, weeks ago, months ago, to be discussed. Chain of events all the way back to 2017 has led us to where we are, and I think there is some better ways to tweak that department, to make it more efficient and smooth. Keep in mind, I still have all of these forms, and after our discussion, everyone will have the chance to have their say on it. So, Mr. Liu.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Yeah, we had a work study on this item, and you asked to look into this some and to get back to you with my thoughts. Just to recap a little bit of the history, we did have the elections under an MOU with the county recorder, Virginia Ross at the time, for about three years. And it got to a point where she didn't want it anymore, gave it back to the board, to the county manager through the board. Craig Stanley was the manager at the time. And as he noted, when that happened, things, things were going well, but it's just what she wanted to do. So, so we did take it back. Talking with other counties like Maricopa, Coconino, La Paz, Mojave, Cochise, there really have been different forms of this structure, really all three, between, between us all over the years, and they go back and forth, and they have different challenges and different advantages to them. I think that in our current situation, given where we're at, and the fact that we have a recorder who is very experienced in the operations and in the business and in this county, and has the relationships with the stakeholders and the resources that are out there, I think at this moment in time, it gives us a really good chance of success. As I talk to the other counties, the effectiveness of the different structures are really based on the people that are in those positions at the time and the circumstances that they find themselves in. And that's why you see them shift over the years in those counties. And I would also note that if that was a direction that the board wanted to go, and as noted in the brief description for the item, the county attorney's office and we would work with the Secretary of State's office and Attorney General's office to make sure that whatever structure and agreement we come up with is valid and legitimate in their eyes as well. So, the recorder Dana Lewis is here, and would like, would like the opportunity to speak, Chairman, if you'd wish, on what her vision would be.
Yes, we would, and you mentioned a meeting with stakeholders?
We did, yes, last week, last Monday. Week prior, we met with some of the stakeholders and party leaders to discuss these various options.
Okay. Ms. Lewis?
Chairman and Supervisors, at this time, one of our greatest priorities must be ensuring the residents of Pinal County have safe and secure elections. We must restore confidence in our system and ability to deliver an election where every legal vote is counted, and show we have expended every effort to educate our residents on who is eligible to register and how to register and become a voter in Pinal County. To that end, should you seek to move the responsibilities of the Elections Director under the supervision of the Office of the Recorder, there are immediate steps to be taken, which must begin with an accurate assessment of our county capacity to meet the needs of a highly efficient Elections Department. To accomplish this, in the first week, I will schedule meetings with the staff and county management to review overall needs, establish efficient educational and professional development plans, accomplish a fiscal analysis, identify required resources and vacancies, and create a robust communications strategy with voters and stakeholders. Stakeholders' meetings will continue, internal staff, those eligible to vote in Pinal County, county management, city and town clerks, and vendors, staff of the Arizona Secretary of State, and of course, you, the Board of Supervisors. In the area of personnel, we will expedite the transition to being under one roof by having the voter registration and early voting staff move to the Coolidge office. This should reduce opportunities for departmental silos and start rebuilding previously fractured relationships between departments. As to Elections Operations directly, we will verify all deadlines for the November 2023 jurisdictional election. Additionally, our teams will review all security, safety, emergency, personnel, and audit processes, and the E-minus schedule. We will also schedule a thorough page-by-page review of current desktop procedures, identify voids, and work briskly to ensure all processes have been captured. A finalized copy of the standard operating procedures will then be provided, provided to the Pinal County Attorney's Office for legal review, and to make the necessary redactions to ensure availability to all county stakeholders. A key accomplishment will be to hire an Elections Director with formidable experience, and impress upon county management, with all due respect, you as board members, who will be included in the interview process, how important someone with Arizona election knowledge will be in this time, in addition to or instead of a degree. Historically, this scenario has worked for voters of Pinal County. We are at a junction where we have a moral and legal obligation to ensure the future elections are safe, secure, transparent, and moving in the direction of progress. Reinventing the wheel and learning on the fly is not acceptable and will not work. It is my intent to use best practices and proven techniques in all aspects of Elections Management in Pinal County for the benefit of our citizens. I did not seek out this option. I have always been holding to the best interest of Pinal County voters, but I stand ready to serve. The concern about it being one person developing strong and effective policies and procedures, providing necessary training with thorough evaluations of all practices with an eye for continual improvement developments of culture of excellence that transcends any individual, but it must start somewhere, at some time, and with someone. Our public deserves to have confidence in every election. The sooner that that starts, the ability to provide such confidence is enhanced, and the move assured that they can be. I stand for questions.
Any discussion or questions?
Sure. Ms. Lewis.
Sir?
So, talking about Elections Director to be hired. So, looking about the state, there are none at the moment. Is that, would that be a fair assessment?
Chairman Sertie, Supervisor McClure, and members of the board, what I would tell you is, any feedback that I have received, is that we're in a volatile situation, and the fact that we have had several elections where there has been question, and for somebody to seamlessly step into that position without somebody to provide cover is a bit scary.
I understand that. And just for the crowd, though, but there are no people around that are willing to step up to take that volatile situation, as you call it, in hand.
None that have stepped up at this time, sir.
Thank you.
Mr. Kavanaugh.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Thank you, Ms. Lewis. You know, a lot of people have asked about the manual counts, and Geraldine Roll was in the process of examining whether manual counts were feasible or not. Did you go, did you ask the, the staff to hold off on that for the moment? Is that something you would continue to do, examine the possibility of manual counts, or no?
Chairman Sertie, Supervisor Kavanaugh, members of the board, at this time, in statute, the ability to move forward on something like that does not exist. My job as the recorder is to make sure that I enforce the law, and that I stand behind with statute behind me, so at this time, we would have to have a more thorough conversation about what that might look like.
So manual counts are illegal in the state of Arizona, is what you're saying?
I'm saying it would need more review, sir.
Okay. Now, I spoke with Mr. Liu the other day, Leo Liu, and we talked about elections, and he said the consensus was in the, in the 2022 general is to move ahead with a canvas despite the unreconciled errors. Do you agree with that decision? What would you do differently?
Chairman Sertie, Supervisor Kavanaugh, members of the board, if you would please explain that statement, I'm not following you.
The, we had an election in 2022, there were unreconciled errors, do you recall?
Unreconciled errors?
There, we had the, the canvas. Oh, it was, it's the sheets, I forget the name of them, where the, the votes are brought in from the precincts, and they weren't reconciled, they weren't in balance. Do you recall that? It was widely reported in the news media? Virginia Ross made mistakes and left the state, sort of things?
So what I can say is that after the canvas, we immediately went, Chairman Sertie, Supervisor Kavanaugh, members of the board, what I can tell you is that when ensued after the canvas was a mandated hand count, that any human errors that occurred were able to be identified, and that the recount process worked.
So, so you're, you would say that you could find an Elections Director, or you'd likely do it yourself if we can't find one, to make sure that these items are in balance?
That is correct, sir.
Before the canvas is brought to the board. Was the canvas that was brought to the board accurate? Do you recall?
I cannot speak to that, sir.
The, you're going to hire in a new Elections Director if you, if you are put over the position, over the office? And we, we bent, we bonused Virginia Ross twenty-five thousand dollars, if you recall that, right? And it was in the terms of the contract that required Virginia Ross to canvass on the Monday, November 22nd board meeting. Do you think that could have induced Virginia Ross to move ahead and declare the results just to get the canvas scheduled on the Board of Supervisor meeting? What would, if, would you have done differently? Can you kind of address that?
Chairman Sertie, Supervisor Kavanaugh, members of the board, to speak in supposition about what occurred during the 2022 election, about areas that were not under my purview, I think would be ill-stepped. What I can tell you is, again, everything that I just read in my statement that says what my vision would be for the department at this time going forward, and ensuring that stakeholders are a better part of that process, and the communication lines are extremely clear. I think we've already had some roundtable discussions in regarding what it looks like to establish a canvas date, and why we don't just need one and can possibly schedule three to make sure we're in compliance with statutory requirements.
So you didn't know that there were errors being delivered to the board for us to canvass, right? You didn't know that that was...
Sir, I will not say that there were errors.
Okay, all right. I have no, I have no further questions. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Chair, I have a comment on that. So the canvases, I'm not going to put you under the gun here. The canvases brought, we knew that a recount was coming, and then issues were brought up that there may be an issue. And it was found at that time by Ms. Roll that there were issues, and we knew that the recount was coming, so we prepared for that. Also during the canvas, we had to canvass, not necessarily that day, but we had to canvass because of lawsuits that were being brought, and the particular candidates could not sue us until, until a canvas occurred. So that hastened the lawsuits that they were so anxious to go forward with. Is that a fair assessment, Mr. Volker? Yes. So, I just want to clarify that point. And, and the issues that were brought up were found in looking at the recount coming up, that there were some issues. They were small, but they were issues, and I understand, everybody wants every vote counted, and I am totally for that, but the issues were found, and we probably would have not found them had it not been for a recount, because we've never had a race this close, nor a recount in this state. And there may have been others in other counties that have had the same issues.
Chairman Sertie, Supervisor McClure, members of the board, I will concur with that statement.
Thank you.
I just wanted to comment on that if we would make this move, that this does make this position, since you're elected, accountable to the citizens. And if you, if we do do this, would you continue to be accountable to the stakeholders and listen to suggestions, et cetera?
Chairman Sertie, members of the board, I think it should be no other way.
Okay. Mr. Goodman?
Yes. And, you know, with, and I like the word that you use, volatile, is so imperative right The one, I, I think in particular, because multiple times over the course of this last year or so, I've requested that any communication that, that the director had with any member of this board, that the communication to the other board members be given. I just want to make sure going forward, you're willing to do that. There's ways to get into that. There was a comment made that we can't talk to one another, but there is a process that all of us as board members know, and that's through our clerk, that can, all these information. And so I just want to make sure that any communication from any board member, that you're willing to make sure that it goes through the proper channels to get to all of us, so that we all are familiar with what's being asked, what was going forward, so that we're all informed. Because ultimately, no matter how we look at this, the buck stops here. And so regardless, we still have that responsibility, the five of us. Unanimous, I mean, we don't have to be unanimous in it, but we need to be working better as, and functioning as a board as a whole. The only way that happens is through the proper communication for all of us to function in our capacity as board members. Are you willing to do all that?
Chairman Sertie, Supervisor Goodman, members of the board, I do understand that there are protocols that must be put in effect due to open meeting laws, but I will work hand-in-hand with Ms. Kennedy to ensure that I follow protocols and communicate... hand in hand with Ms. Kennedy to ensure that I follow protocols and communicate effectively with the Board of Supervisors, county management, and the stakeholders of this county.
Okay. Thank you.
Anyone else for now?
One, one more quick thing. This refers to the manual count that everybody's itching to talk about. And that was started, I understand, and just, and, and, and it was shut down, and that was because of Secretary of State issues, it was other things, and looking at other counties that had then come up and said, hey, we want to do a manual count. Well, we want to do one, and to make sure that everybody's on the same page, you're trying to coordinate with the other counties to come up with an elections procedure manual function that says this is how you would do it so that everybody's not doing different things at the same time. Is that, is that a fair assessment?
Chairman Sertie, Supervisor McLaurin, members of the board, I understand that a manual tabulation exercise that had started and then was shut down by, I'm not sure exactly who gave that directive, it was just that. I believe that at this time, we're sitting in an unprecedented situation and that sometimes it's okay to look up to somebody who's been doing this longer than us, better than us, and has more knowledge in regards to this and how it walks right up to the line of statute, and so that we are making sure we are not breaking the law, where we're going forward to make sure we're communicating with the stakeholders.
But just to me, but that's a coordinated effort statewide?
Absolutely.
Not, not just us starting and stopping and doing something crazy.
That is correct. We are a bottom-up state, which means that we have purview over certain responsibilities, but it would be in the best interest of the county, in my opinion, to make sure we're coordinating that effort across the state.
Thank you.
Mr. Liu, before I open it up to the public, do you have anything to add?
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Chairman. Before the public, it'd be good if our county attorney can come up and help to clarify and stage this item.
And Supervisor Kavanaugh wants to weigh in, too. Do you want to do that before the county attorney?
Sure. Ms. Lewis? Thank you. So, during the last election cycle, the can, as we voted, Supervisor Sertie mentioned that someone had communicated to him that there was a problem with the machines or something. They communicated to Supervisor Sertie, but may not have communicated internally. Will you establish a reporting mechanism so that anybody can hit the stop button if there's a problem?
Chairman Sertie, Supervisor Kavanaugh, members of the board, absolutely.
Okay. Thank you.
Very good point.
Chair, members of the board, Ken Volkmer, Pinal County Attorney. I just really want to set this agenda item up, so everybody, and really, I understand the board knows, but make sure the public is really what, is aware of what's going on. Essentially, there are three sort of distinct ways that elections can be ran, the elections director can, can operate. They can report directly to the board without the county manager as an intermediary. They can report directly to the county manager, and the county manager reports directly to the board, or it can be put under the recorder's office. Now, all functions cannot be placed under the recorder's office. There are certain legal mandatory requirements that must stay under this board. And the reason I bring that up is currently, our system is it reports through Mr. Liu. The way this agenda item is set up, if this board takes no action, the elections director will continue to report through Mr. Liu then to you. This agenda item is also set up that you can modify it and say, no, you want the elections director to report directly to the five of you. That is what Maricopa County did up until two weeks ago, and then they actually just changed it to place it under the county manager, or you can place it under the recorder's office. When you look at counties across the state, all three options are used to varying degrees. I believe Mr. Liu set it up very well. It's really based on the skill level and the strengths and weaknesses of the various actors involved. Obviously, if you have a very strong recorder, placing it in the recorder does make some sense because there is one voice they're listening to, not five different voices, and then there is one person that essentially is accountable. I mention all of that to, to request, as the board makes a decision or chooses not to make a decision, that explicit direction be given to my office because most likely there's going to be some sort of MOU that's going to need to be drafted that makes very clear what the expectations of each party are, what any reporting requirements are, and then potentially also review periods. It is, and I'm not advocating or suggesting it, I'm simply informing you of an option. It may be an option to do perhaps like a six-month review. If one of the options listed there were to go forward to see how it's working, that would give us enough time right before the elections to make sure that everything's buttoned up. There's also the ability to do continual reviews. There was a mention, I believe Chairman Yu had spoke about, a community kind of meeting where we met with the parties. I was a participant in that. I know one of the concerns that was addressed by some of our community members is this should not be a political issue. We shouldn't be putting it under the recorder because she's a Republican or because she's a Democrat, but because that person is in the best situation. There was a recommendation that perhaps, even if you put it on a longer term, perhaps every two years, this be reviewed, and we could embed that into the MOU to see how's it working and to evaluate the various skill sets. Again, if you had a very seasoned, very good election director, it may not be necessary to place it under the recorder, I don't know, but it's going to be very skill-driven. So, what I'm asking is that you give our office very explicit directions. We have a great relationship with the Secretary of State's office. I've already reached out to the election director. Fortunately, she used to work in our office for a period of time, so we have a good relationship with her. No matter what decision this board makes, we're going to be able to make sure that we're in legal compliance, that we're not going to run into the issue that Cochise County ran into where I think the AG ultimately sued, and there was some kind of bickering back and forth. This will give us the opportunity to make sure that everything is done properly and done legally. But really, I just want to express to you, give very explicit, very clear directions so my team can present a full MOU that everybody can sign and everybody can fully understand what, what the expectations are.
So, are you asking us not to have a vote today until you work out that? That sounds like weeks to do that.
It would not, sorry, Chair. No, I, I actually would prefer you give us a vote and then give me direction because it's going to take a little time. It's not going to take weeks, it's not going to take months, but if this board can say this is the direction we want, we can begin working towards it.
Would we then have to come back and approve that again, or will it already have been approved?
You're going to have to sign it because, again, we're making agreements. You can start acting under it if this board, and again, I'm just giving hypothetical, if this board says, I think it should go under the recorder. I think Dana can take that action and begin acting in that capacity. We can begin getting all that information together. We would ultimately bring back an MOU that you would sign as well as Ms. Lewis as the recorder, if you went down that avenue. But I am asking that you give us direction now. The longer you wait, the more complicated this gets, and the longer it takes before we get that finality. So, I would prefer you take a vote.
But I can't sign anything unless I have the approval of a majority up here, so there would be another vote later on.
There would be. We'd be acting conformity with the direction and the wishes of the board until that formal vote's there. We, I believe our next board meeting is in early August. I think it's reasonable if we are given clear direction that we'll, at the next board meeting, have that document prepared to be signed.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
Ken, maybe I can add, add a little bit of clarity to that. When this occurred back in 2013, on January 9th, the action for the board at that time was to change the reporting structure for the Elections Department from the Assistant County Manager to the County Recorder. Then, on January 30th, there was an action item before this board to approve, disapprove a memorandum of understanding between the board and the recorder, following up on the January 9th action to move those functions. So, the similar process is what Ken is describing right now, that was done back in 2013.
Okay.
And yes, the chairman did sign off on that and had come to the board.
Okay. Anyone else before we go to the public? Yes.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. So, that, when I was speaking with Dana Lewis, the term I was looking for is the audit logs. In October, Virginia Ross said that we needed to do the audit logs and the master audit logs. She said they must be in balance before they leave and they send the ballots back to us, but we now know that that didn't happen. Included in our instruction to you, can we and would it be advisable to require the Elections Department or the Recorder's Office, who was ever in charge, to give us very specific reports so we can check those boxes and ask the correct questions? Were the audit logs completed? Is this in balance? You know, everything. Would it be appropriate to do that? Yes or no, or do you want more time to think about it?
Generally speaking, I think it makes sense. The only hesitance I would have is to say that they're perfectly in balance. What happens if they cannot be reconciled? So, I, I think it would be reasonable to give direction that you, your expectation is that the audit, audit logs would be reconciled and any non-conformity would be brought to the board's attention. But forcing them to reconcile something, if it doesn't add up, it doesn't add up. So, we want to make sure that we don't create an impossible situation, but I think setting those expectations is, is fair, reasonable, and I think it's in the interest of transparency and, quite frankly, you know, our community.
Okay. If that's it, I'm going to get on.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
Mr. Chairman, it's Supervisor Miller.
Yes.
Just briefly, I'd like to opine just for a second here. The devil's in the details. The details will be the MOU. I think that's very, very important that we move forward with that, and that will require another vote, and I think we can draw down the exact tour, or path that each individual has to do, along with trying to find someone to fill the position, which could take us a while, it seems like. But we're going in the right direction with this, and I was around in 2013 when we did this and put it under the Recorder's Office, so I think we'll be fine. I wanted to just add that.
Thank you. Okay, I'm going to go to these cards. If anything has changed your opinion, feel free to, to not speak or change your opinion. First off, I have Joyce Klein. Remember, you have three minutes and basically where you're from.
Thank you, board members. I'm Joyce Klein. I reside in Florence. I'm fairly new, three-plus years in Pinal County. My limited experience with Ms. Lewis is that she's exceptionally qualified. I've had limited interactions with her. I realize that the county has had election integrity issues, and at this time, I would support the board looking at a very qualified individual to take the community interests in election integrity. I don't quite understand the entire process, but I am here and I'm very interested, so I, I'm going to trust that you're going to make the good and proper assessment. That's all.
Thank you. Mike Miller.
My name is Mike Miller. I'm a PC with District 13, and I reside in Ropeson Ranch here in Eloy. I come before you this morning because I volunteered as a participant in the recent, looking at the possibility of counting ballots by hand. That exercise occurred over one day, and there were a number of us that participated in that. The object was to see if we could hand count the ballots. I can't say that we reached a conclusion that day, but we learned a lot. And it was decided at that point we were going to go forward and do it again and see if we couldn't streamline the process so that we could hand count ballots. We concluded that day, and I sent an email to Ms. Ruhl and thanked her for allowing that process and volunteered to do it again. She thanked me and said she would contact me when we were going to do that, and she thought that would be on June 15th. Prior to that date, two or three days before that date, I emailed her and told her that I had cleared my calendar and that I was willing to work that day. She emailed me back and said it had been decided not to proceed further with, with this process. I was discouraged by that, and I started thinking about things that had happened that day. And we had talked that day. She had explained about what was going on with updating the county computers for looking at the ballots, and also that there was going to be a new introduction of software called ESNS to our computers. And one of the people that were helping with this today pointed out that it's well-known throughout the news and so forth that ESNS has been kind of a problem with machine counting. And nothing was settled there. We thought that we were going to be coming back and doing that process again, and I think it was important that we be able to do that, but now that's clear that it's not. I support putting the Elections Department under Dana Lewis. I do know Dana through many contacts with her. In fact, she and I met one time and discussed the election process in great detail, and I was encouraged by that. And I'm encouraged that maybe you will put that division under her because I think that she will manage it and be open to the public and work through any situations that we might have. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Boots Hawks.
I'm Boots Hawks from Casa Grande. I'm the founder of Conservative Freedom Lovers, also a member of the PCRC and Sergeant of Arms for them. I'm here today because of yesterday. Yesterday, the Fourth of July, should be the day that we celebrate only behind Christmas because the Fourth of July is all about this country. It's about freedom. It's about independence. It's about giving people security in the fact that this is their government. It's not your government, it's not my government, it's the people's government. And the only way we're going to do that is by securing good, solid elections that we could count on. One person, one vote, counted right away, not 30 days, not two months, right away. I also was involved in that hand count over there, which to me, it was a sham. It was to set us up so that they could say it can't be done. The fact is, it can be done, and it's been done in other countries with a lot more population than we have in Pinal County. So, it can be done, gentlemen, so don't listen to the fact that it can't be done because that's baloney. Now, you know, when we start talking about leadership and saying, well, we could only do it with machines, every good leader that I've ever met always has a Plan B. Our Plan B should develop a hand count so at any time, we could put it in force and use that to accurately and completely count the ballots in a reasonable amount of time. We can't be taking a month to do this, and there's no reason, especially when you're talking about machines, taking a month to do it. That's ridiculous. Now, whoever made the contract with Virginia Ross, I mean, they need to have their hands slapped because that was bull, letting her get away with that money and not having a clawback to where we could get that money back or not, or hold it off for a certain period of time. I'm looking at you guys because you're elected. I look at Dana because she's elected. This election coming up and future elections need to fall under an elected official, somebody that we, the people, we, the people, can hold accountable. That's important because an elected bureaucrat, whoever it might be, we can't hold accountable. Those people get in office and they're there forever. Thank you.
Bruce Shute.
At least, I think it's still good morning. I'm from Casa Grande, and my concern is that we stick to our original founders' constitution. And basically, it comes down to what Boots just said, we, the people. I'm against a few people making decisions for all of us. I think we need to have every position that's really accountable to I think we need to have every position that's really accountable to the people be an elected position, not an appointed one by a few people. Accountability is the issue, and it has to be an issue that goes back to we, the people, holding people accountable. And that can only be done, in my opinion, if we have elected people and if we have votes that are counted by we, the people, not by machines, not by wherever out in space, but that it's an actual count by actual people. Thank you very much.
Lori Welsh.
Thank you for having us here. I'm also a member of the Conservative Freedom Lovers. We're a huge group in Casa Grande, Coolidge, Florence, and Maricopa, and we try to stay up on all the issues that are coming up. And what we're here today is to make sure that everyone understands that we support Dana Lewis. She's done a fantastic job. She's gonna continue to do a fantastic job. I personally don't want to see somebody come in that doesn't know what they're doing, they're not elected, they're not accountable. We, the people, have the right to elect who we want to elect, and she's been elected and we'll continue to support her, and that's who I want to see in that office. Thank you.
Vicki McLaughlin.
Good morning, Board of Supervisors and Chairman Sertie. My name is Vicki McLaughlin. I'm the District Five Chairman in Apache Junction, and I have had the very, very good fortune to work with Dana Lewis over my chairmanship time. Dana does research, finds out answers, and she has the knowledge that she can support what she states and what she suggests to people. And I am totally in support of Dana being placed as the head of, or in the Elections Office as an elected official. I think it's important that we have elected officials in these positions. I think Dana should be reporting to the Board of Supervisors. I would like to see the Board of Supervisors taking back a lot of their control or their supervisory capacity over our officials and having people that are working in the county all reporting to you, whether they're elected, whether they are hired, whatever the situation is. And I think it's important, because as you have stated already, the buck stops here, and it's important that someone answers to the buck. So I would like to see us go in that direction. Thank you very much.
Marcia David.
Initially, I wasn't prepared to speak, and the more I thought about it, the more important it became to me to step up and voice my opinion. I was going to read the preamble to the Constitution, but basically, everyone has summarized it. It is "we, the people." The Constitution acted like a colossal merger, uniting a group of states with different interests, laws, and cultures under America's first national government. The Articles of Confederation, the states acted together for specific purposes. The Constitution united its citizens as members of a whole, vesting the power of the Union in the people. Our Elections Department was removed from the supervision of our county recorder and put under the control of an individual hired by the county manager. How can the choice of one hired bureaucrat represent the choice of the people? We want the elections put under the control of an elected official. Please put the Elections Department under the county recorder. If our country is to function as a democracy, it's imperative that our election process is not impaired. Whether your view of election tampering and ballot fraud is unequivocally fact or just the product of conspiracy theory, or somewhere in between, it is in everyone's best interest to do everything we can to assure its sanctity. Put our election process under the supervision of an elected official. Put it under the supervision of the county recorder. I too support Dana Lewis. Thank you.
Steve Hunt.
Board of Supervisors, thank you very much for this opportunity to speak to you. I would like to start off by first saying that any law that has been made can be changed. And regardless of what the state law is in relationship to hand-counting votes, that law can and should be changed, and we, as the people here in Pinell County, can start that process. It does not have to stand forever. I will tell you that 36 million French people voted one day on a national election, and by 10 o'clock that night, they had all the votes counted. So don't tell me that we can't do it, because I know for a fact that we can do it. We just have to move in that direction. I heard a statement just a moment ago that said, "The buck stops with you." In fact, it doesn't stop with you. It really stops with we, the people. And we, the people, will make a decision come the next time the election comes up for your positions, whether or not we feel that you did an adequate job. And believe me when I say that the majority of the people do not feel that you've done an adequate job of protecting our vote. I am very disappointed with what happened with Virginia Ross. I was here at the meeting when she was put in that position, and I don't think enough investigation was done before you made that decision. I'm not impressed with the decisions that you made with this last individual either. So be warned that we, the people, the buck will stop with us. Thank you.
Gail Ross.
Thank you, Board of Supervisors and county members, for letting me speak today. I am a resident of Apache Junction. I wanted to voice my opinion that the Board should place the Elections Department in its entirety under the supervision of the county recorder Dana Lewis with a clear and defined memorandum of understanding with the county recorder. Dana Lewis has experience, skills, and knowledge of the processes and systems used to lead us through a successful election with integrity. I also feel that I would like you to, again, take back some of your power, and I'm in favor of having the Board of Supervisors be involved regarding the vetting of any supervisory employment candidates, not just have it fall under the county supervisor's purview. Thank you.
Nola Perkins.
I get tongue-tied when I get up here, so I have to write down what I want to say. Chairman Sertie and Board of Supervisors, thank you for letting us speak today. You've made so many mistakes recently. I'm here to beg you to be very strategic in your decision regarding this Elections Officer. You've acted in haste and apparently not considered all the ramifications in the past. Perhaps if you seek input from the community, we will be better served. It appears to me there is only one person who has legacy knowledge and the big picture of the Elections Department, and she is a valuable asset who should be consulted and included in this conversation, and I thank you for doing that.
Brenda Gifford.
Chairman Sertie, gentlemen, it's no secret that I asked for all of your resignations after the debacle of the primary election. When we looked, when I look now at what Attorney Volker tried to clarify for us is this is a matter of reporting options, and they can report to the Board of Supervisors, to the county manager, to the recorder. I think that, to any casual observer, we can see that reporting to the Board of Supervisors in Maricopa County hasn't served anyone very well. I think that we look at a series of catastrophic failures in Pinell County. The county manager, whether it was inadequate oversight, whether it was incompetence, whatever the issues were, we have not been served well by the leadership of Mr. Lou. I would really like to suggest, he may be stellar in many other areas, but in this context, I don't see that he has served us well at all. I understand that his position requires a master's degree, which was waived for him, but it's interesting that when we had a Department of Elections that were well-qualified with legacy knowledge, it was decided by Mr. Lou, with your concurrence, whether it was a rubber stamp or a thoughtful decision, that it should require a master's degree, and then they raised the salary ridiculously and haven't been able to fill the position. I think that anybody coming into this position, I can't imagine that anybody would want to take this position, to put it all on Dana Lewis is risky, because she is eminently qualified. She's the only person with legacy knowledge, and she deeply and passionately cares about the county. But I don't want her to have the millstone of the failures that are being handed to her to hurt her career going forward, because she's too valuable to us. I would like to suggest that you form a task force to create an MOU comprised with stakeholders and qualified individuals that would include the Board of Supervisors, that you guys would accept your responsibility and be much more thorough in the decisions you make and not do things as haphazardly as we've observed in the past. To include county managers, party chairs, the Pinell County Chair of both parties and state level, to include county attorney Volker, to include a school board member, to include the chair or voting member of the City Clerks Association, a previous election director not from Pinell County, the Arizona Secretary of State, and the Arizona AG. And I think that it should be maybe led by county recorder Dana Lewis, who has been repeatedly referred to as an elected official, which is not accurate. She is under appointment presently. She's running for office, and I genuinely hope that she wins by such an overwhelming landslide that you guys will listen to her more carefully. I think she's done a superior job in every aspect. She's obviously won the confidence of the community, which none of you have at this point. Thank you very much.
Pamela Bradshaw.
Hi, my name is Pamela Bradshaw. I'm the Precinct 59 Captain in Apache Junction. I do not feel that the county manager should have the total authority or is qualified to give qualified parties who will fill the positions of Election Director. Also, I'm of the opinion that the county recorder Dana Lewis should have authority over any Elections Director that will be hired to fulfill this current position. I like that the lady that just spoke do believe that we do need a task force to get this carried out. Thank you very much.
Shirley Carter.
Thank you, Board of Supervisors and Chairman, for letting me speak today. I live in Eloy. I'm also a PC and a State Committee person. I try to get involved as much as I possibly can in our community. I'd like to bring up what turned out to be four points that I want to speak about. I believe that elections should be under a elected official, all aspects, so that would be the recorder and the Elections Department. I also believe that that elected official should be the one that does the hiring for the Election Director. It should not be a county manager, and it shouldn't be the Board of Supervisors. I think it should be your approval in the end, but I think it should come from whoever's going to be the top person covering the elections. I also think that that election official, both recorder and Elections Department, needs to report to you, directly to you, on all matters. Something that got just brought up about the MOU and the audit not reconciling, I come from an accounting background. Audits have to reconcile. Sorry. There's no, there's no exception to that. If the audit cannot be reconciled, the election cannot be certified. It's that simple. Thank you for your time.
Jack Mattishoni.
I'm from Apache Junction, D5, and a PC Captain 58. And I'm here today just because, you know, this is the most important thing, I think, you all have going right now. And sometimes we don't realize that, that the election is what it's all about, okay? That's why you're sitting up there. And I agree with what's been said about we, the people. I mean, that's what it's all about. We, basically, buck stops with us, and we decide whether or not we want to continue to have you represent us, if that's what you're doing, or not to. And what I fear is, because I come from a pretty interesting background in my life, you know, because I've been exposed to different countries. I've seen Marxism, as you might want to say, out there where people seem to want to glory, make it things, make you think that it's a good thing when it's really not. But what I'm looking at here is that we have an election that, you know, it's not the person who's registered to vote, it's the person who is voting and who counts the vote. And I'm here to tell you that we need to make sure the votes are counted, but properly. Make sure that they're not coming from Japan or some other country, that they're being sent in by mail, whatever. There's so many things that just shouldn't be happening that we say, "Oh, it's a conspiracy." I've been watching the news, people, it's not a conspiracy. This is going on out there. Now, you can say, "Oh, I haven't got it in the court." Well, it's the courts. Of course, the courts are not gonna let go in there. Everybody knows our election system is messed up. I'm here to say one thing here today, though. You have a professional, a young lady here I've met, who I do, I'm pretty critical of a lot of people. She is professional. She knows what she's doing. She will represent this county to the point where you can have pride in her image to the county. What I saw previously was someone who was not professional, very unethical, very partisan, and I was, I was just appalled at what was going on, and I'm glad that person's finally gone. Now, I don't know what's gonna happen in the future here. All I know is, I got my bets on Dana Lewis. She's gonna do a darn good job, and we're gonna do the best we can to help her do it. Thank you.
Kathleen Lehman.
My name is Kathy Lehman, Precinct Committee Man from Precinct 109 here in Florence. I believe that Pinell County has a unique opportunity today at this time. That opportunity is to allow the county to take advantage of the experience that you have with the current-appointed recorder Dana Lewis. She has several years of experience within the Elections Department. Her expertise will provide keen insight into the election process and help that department to continue to develop policies and procedures that will benefit the election process. As a voter in Pinell County, I believe that a decision to move the Elections Department under the recorder is critical to be sure that our elections are run efficiently and with integrity. Thank you.
Earl Dorr.
So Earl Dorr and I'm a District Two Chair for PCRC. First, I want to say, you guys have done a lot of stuff to make a lot of changes to try and make this happen the right way, and I don't think everybody necessarily gives you that credit. This new Elections Office looks like a good deal. This new Elections Office looks like a good deal. But one thing I want to tell you right off the top, election integrity is important. It doesn't matter what party you hire, it's important. The questions that we asked of the previous Elections Director, or I asked personally, I asked them of ESNS when that vendor was in here, I asked them of the IT guy running the show over there, and I ask very direct and very hard questions because that's how you learn what's going on. I've also asked Dana Lewis many hard and direct questions. The difference being Dana answers those questions, she steps up to the plate, she tells you what she can do, what she has control of, and what she doesn't have control of. And she also tells you what state laws or legislative issues need to be changed if she's going to have control of that. She doesn't have control of everything, but she's very qualified, she's very good at getting her stakeholders involved, and I think that she would be an excellent choice. As far as getting a policy and procedure manual in place, those are the rules, that's what you need to follow, and that's how it goes. That's going to cut a lot of heartburn down for everybody. I think she'll do a very good job of that. And as far as I'm concerned, hand counts, if we could do them, it'd be great. Use the machines. ESNS, I liked all the answers I got from that vendor, but you still need to verify things. So if there's a way that we can do some kind of a hand count, even if it takes an extensive period of time with PCs involved, I think we should do that. But again, she knows the statutes better than I do. Just up here to say one more, it's just one more person saying, that's, that's your, that's your person you should be choosing, I think. Put it under the Recorder.
Unfortunately, Lisa is not going to be able to be here, she's on her way to be a grandma at the moment. So if I may take her spot, I am her first Vice Chair.
Name, name.
Okay. Good morning, gentlemen, Chairman Sertie, members of the Board. My name is Jennifer Hills-Boss, I am the first Vice Chair of the Pinal County Democratic Party. I am also a working group leader for the Arizona Democratic Party Election Integrity Committee. So to say that I have an interest in ensuring free and fair elections where every legal vote is counted, I give up a lot of my time to make sure that happens throughout the state. And unfortunately, I have a beautiful statement that I'm not going to be able to read because there are specific points that Lisa asked me to address since she can't be here. Number one is, as it's been stated a couple of times now, Dana Lewis is not an elected official yet. She was appointed by this Board to the County Recorder's position, and per statute, we would, you know, we would love to see her succeed in that position, but I think it's a little pre, oh, I lost word. That's okay. Moving on. So she is elected, she is, she is an appointed person in an elected official capacity. And the Arizona revised statute specifically split up the Elections Duty between a Recorder's Office and the District Supervisors, and the Board of Supervisors. So we don't have a clear understanding of what you guys want this to look like, moving this under the Recorder's Office with no directions. There's at least three different ways that we can set this up, three different reporting options, and taking a vote today without actually having a little more clarity on who you would like to see that person, you know, are we trying to shift everything under Dana that we legally can? Are we trying to shift just some of those functions so that we can have a more cohesive We have a history, especially in the last year, of hasty action by this Board and County Management that has led to some disastrous things. I don't think anyone here will argue with me when I say I was extremely disappointed at the disenfranchisement of voters during the primary election, and to me, that is a disaster. I have been pointed out that the unreconciliation or the inability to reconcile the votes last fall was not a huge issue statistically, but again, we had votes that weren't counted, and to me, that is, that is absolutely heartbreaking. So I will finish today by saying we would support ideas of creating a task force to create a better idea of how this might work and what those reporting guidelines might look like before we actually vote on something that has no meat to it yet. Thank you.
Good morning, Chairman Sertie, members of the Board, Pete Saban, from possibly soon to be incorporated Morana, I guess. Anyway, just to kind of rehash some of this stuff, going back in time, November 21st, 2022, I believe Ms. Ross stood up here and said, I stand by those numbers. As far as I'm concerned, unless I'm missing something, that's a false statement to mislead you guys into thinking that everything was fine. And if I'm, again, making a mistake with the timeline, I'm sorry, but, okay. But anyway, making a false statement to receive compensation that you were not deserved, to me, that's fraud. And it seems to be that there's nobody really concerned about that aspect of it. So, you know, clawback, you know, that's one way to put it, but I think we should be exploring this as a potential crime because that's what I think it is. We also have, you know, Mr. Frisk, you know, probably the guy who was least at fault in all this because he lost a lot of institutional knowledge in the Elections Department when he was, when he was made Elections Director. Then there's Ms. Rol, who was very partisan and didn't respond to mine and several other people that I know that are public record requests. So I'm kind of glad that she's gone. And so moving forward from that last year and a half or two, it's been a disaster. I agree with a lot of the sentiment here that we don't want to make a hasty decision, we want to be well thought out and well considered what we're going to do. Being that it's mid-2023, we have a little bit of time before the next, you know, major election in '24. But I would say that I do support putting the Elections Department under the purview of Dana Lewis and the Recorder's Office. And I think there's an efficiency there, having teamwork and camaraderie. And I want to make sure that you guys going forward understand the importance of election integrity to all of us citizens of this county, and that you really focus on making sure that they have all the resources they need to do the job adequately. And that's it, thank you.
Marty Mitchell. We're 75% of the way through.
Hi. Thank you for this opportunity for me giving my opinion to the Chairman and the Board. And this is a tough act to follow, these have been some very great comments, and I support most of them, like Boots and Marcia. And let's talk about the preamble of the Constitution. We, the people, in order to form a more perfect union, establish a justice, and ensure domestic tranquility, we need a good election process. We're a house divided right now, but we all are Americans, and we need to go back and forget about our rights and lefts and become Americans and put our trust and faith back into the people that can support us with these elections. And we just must reestablish our stability. And this isn't about giving the tasks to a certain person, but it's about a process that we need to set and establish right at this moment. And we need an election process to elect a person that can be over this. I've worked for a global corporation, and anybody we appointed to something became loyal to the people that they appointed to because this becomes their job in the, in the chain of command. But this needs to be an elected position, and from what everything I've heard, I do not know Ms. Lewis, but from everything I've heard from everybody standing up here about her character, she would definitely win this election. And if that's what the people want, that's what we should do. And I'm really impressed with all the great comments I've heard about you. I don't know you personally or have ever dealt with you, but for people to get up and establish that character, but it has to be through a process. And then she could be, you could appoint her to this, and she might become the governor in two years, then what do we do? Who's taking the position? Because she is grooming from this. But what I'm trying to say is, that will leave a hole, and you're back to the same problem, who gets the position? So let's put it upon the people and reestablish this back to where it needs to be. I mean, even the Police Department has an Internal Affairs where they keep an audit process. That's why we have the House and the Senate, the House and the Senate, to keep a balance. And we need to look at that. And so an elected person would represent the people, it's no temptation, about keeping their chain of command going and appeasing people that, that it should be for the people. So just thank you for letting me take this time, and I really appreciate a lot of the other comments that I back up. Thank you.
My name is Belinda Rodriguez, and I'm the Chair for Pinal County Republican Committee, and I reside in Gold Canyon. Chairman Sertie and Supervisors, first I'd like to say thank you for hearing and addressing our concerns as quickly as you have. Today, you're proposing two or three solutions to address the concerns we had of accountability and oversight. As I mentioned at the last meeting and in my email, and as you heard in Dana's presentation, you have an individual within Pinal County Government that has the knowledge and the years of experience with the election processes and procedures. That is our County Recorder Dana Lewis. In addition, Dana has demonstrated that she has the leadership skills and ability to know when she should bring in others for consultation or approval. She has also demonstrated that she has the ability to engage all parties, and that having a successful election with integrity is of the utmost importance to her. I believe she'll be able to prepare and leave a procedures manual that she'll be, that will be able to be followed for years, even after she is no longer in that position. I also believe that when or if you place the Elections Department under the Recorder, it is imperative that you, as the Board of Supervisors, should remain engaged and have oversight or collaboration to those activities and decisions of the Recorder and Elections Kent Volkmer mentioned that not all responsibilities of the Elections Department can be placed under the Recorder's Office. I'd like to know what those specific responsibilities are. For all of these reasons that I've stated and that you've heard from many in the audience, I recommend that you place the Elections Department directly reporting to the County Recorder with a clear and defined memorandum of understanding. Thank you.
I'm Stan Howard from Casa Grande. Board of Supervisors, thank you for allowing us to speak. I was appointed a PC, and several days after that, I was asked to go to Coolidge to be an observer of election process with the new Elections Director. I did that, and he showed everything to be just fine. He had a fiasco of a primary, and he did a mea culpa. Primary came, and he was gone. You all have taken some real hits for the decisions you've made, and the people that you've decided on have had problems. I would like to vouch for Dana Lewis. I think this decision is one of the better ones that you have made recently and in my precinct. When I go and ask their opinions, independents, Democrats, Republicans, they all say somebody should fire the Board of Supervisors, they're making too many mistakes. This is one thing that I don't think is going to be a mistake, the appointing of Dana Lewis. Thank you.
Chairman Sertie, members of the Board, thank you for this opportunity. My name is Jeff Carr, I live in Florence, and there have been a lot of accolades for Dana Lewis, and I concur with those. I've had the opportunity to speak with her on several occasions, and I know she is, in her mind, a bipartisan individual, and, but more importantly than putting this individual in the, in the responsibility of overseeing not only the Recorder's position, but the Elections Department, is the sense of a continuity, if you would. The idea that one person, of course, under your direction, and a County Manager, would be ultimately responsible. We've all dealt with the different organizations who are non-cooperative, you might say, jurisdictional issues. I think by placing it under one individual, in this case, Dana Lewis, but even going forward, having it set up like that, I think would be a very good decision. Thank you.
We're going to check the overflow room, Chairman. Good morning. My name's Marian Ewing, or excuse me, Chairman and Supervisors. My name's Marian Ewing, I live in Saddle Brook Ranch, I'm a PC Captain in District One. I agree with almost everything everybody has said before me, so I just will want to say that I want the Elections Department in its entirety to be under the County Recorder Dana Lewis. The most important thing that we can do ever at this time is to have fair, honest, and trustworthy elections to get people out to vote again. Thank you for your time.
Is she coming?
Chairman, Supervisors, I'm Nancy Deerfield. I'm a PC of Pinal County. I am just here to support having the Elections Director report to the County Recorder Dana Lewis. Thank you.
Chairman Sertie, gentlemen of the Board, my name is Kirk Feiler, District Chair of District Eight of the PCRC, I live in Eagle Crest. I just want to make one clarification before I go forward, and that is, if you decide to move the County, or the Elections Director Department under the supervision of the County Recorder, it's still an Elections Department, and there's still an Elections Director, it's just under the supervision of the County Recorder. Is that, that, that correct? Okay. So it, it, there's a lot of support for Dana Lewis, that's very obvious, and it certainly makes sense to move the Elections Department under her supervision, under an elected official. That way, the public has a fairly immediate response if they don't like what's going on, although I don't anticipate that happening. There seems to be, again, a lot of confidence in Ms. Lewis. So I would encourage the Board to act now, move the Elections Department under her supervision. I'd also like to recommend that the, there are continued reviews, put in the MOU, and in business, there is always a succession plan. I also want to highly recommend that there is a Deputy Elections Director put in place, that the county spends the resources on that, and also possibly a position that the county spends the resources on that, and also possibly a position of a Director of Operations. Any one of these people can step into the Elections Director position, and that could alleviate a lot of what's going on right now. So thank you. Appreciate your time.
Arthur Crosby.
My name is Arthur Crosby. I'm from Casa Grande. Thank you for letting us speak to you today on this issue. I am very much for elected officials and being accountable by we, the people. And I would echo the support for Dana Lewis. I did a, I was an observer on elections in the last two years, and it's almost a scary situation where you're sitting there not being able to speak and observing all that's going on. And from what has been going on in elections these days, it is appalling to me that they take so long and that it's not controllable. I'm from Massachusetts. The town I was in, I was on the Election Board or Committee. We also had supervision over the machines, and it was a very orderly, honest election situation and procedure. So I'm for the staying with the Recorder. Thank you.
Gail Peters. Next room.
Hello, I am Gail Peters. I'm from Penile County, and I'm here to talk to you about what's been happening. It's been a difficult election, a period, and every time we think we've got it all behind us and it's smooth sailing ahead, something else pops up. It can't be an easy time to be a supervisor. I worked as, I was a precinct co-chair in Minnesota. I was also worked in the elections for 12 years there before I moved here, and I've been working here for four years. And I can tell you, there's a lot to appreciate about what Penile County does and what Arizona does. I'm very aware of that. Something that seems to me very common in our last two Elections Directors is a lack of willingness to communicate, to discuss issues, to work together, to collaborate. With the benefit of 2020 hindsight, had either Mr. Frisk or Ms. Rolle worked together collaboratively with her internal team, I don't think we'd be in this situation today. If the person who is appointed to the position of Elections Director doesn't follow the good judgment to communicate with others, I suggest it needs to be mandated by an organizational chart that makes it clear that the goal is not to be the Lone Ranger, but to practice teamwork and collaboration and focus on election integrity. I feel that Dana is eminently qualified. I have worked with her the last four years. I'm amazed with her dedication to election integrity, and she wants to protect all voters. I am a clear advocate of the decision to put Dana in that position, and thank you.
Catherine Reed.
Good morning. My name is Catherine Reed, and I live in Casa Grande. Thank you, Mr. Chairman and Board Supervisors, for letting me speak my opinion. This is short and to the point. With the numerous problems that we have had with our elections, I believe it's very important that the Elections Department reports to an elected official, someone who can be held accountable and can be voted in or out by the voters, just like we hold you all. Last thing I want to say is what was mentioned about numbers coming out from a bookkeeper, accountant, whatever. As a former business owner, my numbers had to balance. My banker expected it, my accountant expected it, and my husband. I was successful. Thank you.
I believe Neil Carter's long gone, right? Yes.
He's parenting right now.
Larry Grafanakis.
Good afternoon now, Chairman Sertie and Supervisors. I wasn't sure that a RTS meant required to speak, so I did scribble a few things that I wanted to mention. I'm a new PC in Casa Grande, fairly new, just a few, oh, I think about three months. And in the short time that I've known Dana Lewis, I found her to be extremely efficient and knowledgeable and places a high stress on the legal process of voting and counting And I believe that the reporting structure should be placed under the, an elected official in the Elections Department. the reporting structure for the Elections Department should be placed under an elected official. That's what I meant to say. I'd like to echo something on something that was mentioned earlier also. Voting in other countries, I believe it was mentioned that in France, I don't know if it was mentioned particularly in that country, but they do paper ballots and voting, and one day they know the result in the evening. You know, the first time I heard that, a friend of mine from Australia told me that they do theirs in six hours. And I think one day would be a great thing to shoot for. We don't need to go for six hours. But even if it takes a couple of days, I think that'd be a vast improvement over what we've, the results that we've seen and that we've had. It's, as for our vote, I want to say something of our vote, you know, the most important thing that we have as Americans equally is our vote. No one gets more, no one gets less, no matter position or any other factor. Americans, you know, we have to protect our vote, you know, above everything else. When votes are placed in machines, you know, for a time, we don't see the process. We can't see the process. What happens electronically? The votes essentially disappear. And many things can happen to those votes in the meantime before they come out of the machines. I mean, I think we've all seen reports of flash drives being used about them supposedly, you know, being connected or capable of being connected to the Internet and other things, you know. So the use of machines is really a less, well, I'm sorry, can I have three seconds?
Three seconds.
Okay. Once placed in machines, the votes that are placed, that come out of the machines cannot be matched very well or with a lot of confidence with the votes that were placed in the machines.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you very much.
Ken Zeball. Is he still here?
They're checking now, Chairman.
If not, Vicky Smith will be on deck. I say we get Vicky. If he comes back, we'll give him time, but Vicky's up now.
Good afternoon, Chairman Sertie and Supervisors. I just wanted to mention that by all appearances here, like, it seems that since there's so many Republicans here supporting Dana Lewis, just in my experience with her, she's always been very bipartisan. Regardless of appearances, she, whenever I've had, I've had the pleasure of, you know, working on a team with her. I've been on training, you know, and every time, she is inclusive of the Democrats. So I just wanted you guys to know that because it's important to have that bipartisanship and integrity. And I just wanted to say that. So thank you.
Roberto Rivalis.
Roberto Rivalis, resident of Gold Canyon. In hearing the prayer by the minister this morning, let me admit that I am a faithful servant to truth, transparency, transparency and accountability and the Constitution. Yesterday, Mr. Chairman, our nation celebrated independence while in a major crisis of confidence in administration of our elections, a distrust fanned by unending attacks on the integrity of our voting process. How did this all come to be? Attacks based not on documented evidence of fraudulent voting, but by a chorus of partisans refusing to accept the outcome of elections lost by their party's nominees. I agree with overall impressions on the integrity and non-partisanship of Dana Lewis. However, the distrust of the previous Elections Director raises some serious questions. Who was responsible for pushing that distrust? And I believe we need to move forward promptly, but it needs to be based on a truthful history of what happened that led to the resignation by the vilified former Elections Director. And it calls for an election by a party that does not even bear the appearance or semblance of a conflict of interest. And for that reason, I think that you, our elected leaders, owe it to the voting public to demand first, before filling the vacant position, demand an investigation by the Arizona Attorney General comparable to what that Attorney General did in investigating the previous election. As to the hand counting, we all know it's against the law, and we have a wonderful example of what happens, as was illustrated by the national scandal on exhibit in Maricopa County's ninja recount audit. And so I urge that a requisite for restoring confidence is a trusted investigation by a person that lacks conflict of interest, by the state's Attorney General. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
That's all the cards I have, but do we have anyone else who would like to speak? Natasha, maybe help with the heights.
Sorry, I don't write so well, so I didn't fill out a card. I knew you'd ask for someone to come up at the end. I'll just say thank, my name is Doug Stonerock.
Can we get your name?
Yeah, my name's Doug Stonerock. I, my address is Casa Grande, but I, not in the city limits, I live over by the fairgrounds, so it's outside the city limits. Haven't been here too long. I spoke to you all once a little bit ago. Same election stuff. It's really not a whole lot new, except that, thank you for what you do. Clearly, it's not very easy, what I'm seeing here, but I also want to support Dana. I think you should just make a decision today and get this done, get it behind you. A lot of people would think would feel a lot more comfortable if it was just done. That's it. Thank you.
Anyone else?
Mr. Chairman.
Then.
Good afternoon. Rhonda Matischoni, District Five, Penile County. I'm so sorry for anyone who hasn't had a chance to sit down and speak with our lovely Dana Lewis. She is articulate. She's intelligent. And sitting down with her, you will come away with a greater understanding and education on the processes of our voting. So to say anything else would be amiss. So I want to thank you for letting me speak, and Dana Lewis, please.
Anyone else?
Good afternoon, Chairman Sertie, Supervisor Kavanaugh, McClure, and Goodman. Thank you for giving me the opportunity to speak today. Most of the people here today have reiterated how I feel about the purview looking over the Elections Department. I feel strongly, as do others, that Dana Lewis has not only the knowledge but the vast experience to do a good job for all citizens, registered voters of Penile County. I also have seen sadly, as most of us have seen, the damage done by unelected officials and bureaucrats. I think that needs to come to an end. So I heartily endorse Dana Lewis, and I thank you for your time. Oh, did I tell you what? My name is Phyllis Pettyjohn. I'm so sorry. I live in Oracle, Arizona. I am a PC and State Committeeman for Penile County. Thank you very much.
Okay. Keep coming. It's not over yet.
My name is John Orton. I'm from Eloy. I'm a PC and a State Committeeman. I full-heartedly support Ms. Dana Lewis. I am very disappointed in this board, and I'm very disappointed, and I'm hopeful, I should say, hopeful, that this board makes the right decisions. Obviously, our county manager has embarrassed us on a nationwide scale. We're getting ready to hire our fifth Elections Director in two years? I mean, this, this is absolutely ridiculous. Who does the vetting? I mean, how? I'm not pointing the finger directly at Leo Lu, but it's his department. The people that work there, when I look at the county flow chart, the organizational chart, it clearly shows that under the county manager are, they're the ones that are hiring and doing the vetting. And, you know, it's been widely reported that our last Elections Director is a Bernie Sanders supporter with a Bernie Sanders sticker on her car. Did anybody think that something good is going to happen out of hiring a socialist to run our Elections Department? You guys work here. Don't you, don't you see this and understand what's going on? Please, take back control of this county, you know? We should not have an unelected bureaucrat doing We should not have an unelected bureaucrat doing as much as they do. We need, we need, we hired you as being the supervisors. Start supervising and take back some of this control away from the county manager, please.
Good afternoon, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. My name is George Arondo from Cooley's. A lot of interesting information today, but my concern still is, what is this memorandum of understanding it's going to look at? What responsibilities does the board cannot be pushed, and who's going to manage those elements for you? Are you going to have elections Caesar to address your components while the rest is pushed down to the recorder based on the MOU? So my reservation is, you know, how is this going to look at the end of the day, if, regardless of which way you go, because obviously, there's non-existing MOU in existence, so we don't know whose roles, whose functions, whose responsibilities are, what can be delegated, who's responsible, and what's obviously held by you. So I, you know, I met Ms. Lewis once, you know, everybody thinks a lot of greater things of her, but you want to set her up for success, not for failure, so my reservation is until I see the memorandum of understanding, I'd have a better guidance of what, what's held to you, because I think if the board has certain functions that they cannot push out, there may be misperceptions of the group here saying, oh, everything's going to be great, it's going to be under the Recorder's Office, but those key items that kind of are, maybe the nuances ones, will probably not be delegated and still responsible by the board, but until I see that and understand that, I have hesitations and reservations, but definitely do due diligence to have a task force to flush that, those memorandum of understandings. Thank you very much.
Anyone else? Now I think it's over. Okay.
Mr. Chair, I would make a motion at this point to, to move Ms., or to place Ms. Lewis as the overseer, bad choice, but overseer of elections to report to the county manager, to the BOS, as we do not hire nor fire anyone. We are a legislative body, we don't manage anything.
You making a motion?
I am making a motion. I just, I'm just expounding.
I would think that we should give an opportunity to discuss first. Ordinarily, we would discuss and...
You can discuss after this, you don't have to second. So, and I'm asking that we then have constant and continued reports to the BOS, whether at these meetings or otherwise. Something was pointed out earlier that an appointed person would be loyal to those that are appointed. We just have to be careful at that point. I don't think that's the case here. Also, with an MOU to be reviewed at no more than two years in a non-election year, and to fill the election director or manager of operations. That's my motion, if you can understand that.
There's a lot of...
There was.
...extra words in there I don't think that needed to be in there. So I would like to have some discussion now and some comments. So overwhelming thing that I heard was, we still want to get, no matter what we do, we want to have monthly reports, reports at almost every meeting that we have, and that even if we do make this move, that they want far more oversight from this board to watch that whole department. Also, it was mentioned that, Mr. Lou, you were named a couple times. If you want to respond to that criticism, now would be a good time to do that? No. So any more discussion before we ask for a second on that long motion?
Mr. Chairman, if I may? So Paul Whitesell is the former head of the Indiana State Police, Navy SEAL, and one of my trainers. He said, "You can be right, or you can be liked, but you can seldom be both." And, and I heard some of these comments, and in my first six months here, I recognized we had a problem with our Elections Department because we missed some small stuff and began looking into these things. And it, it sort of fell on deaf ears. And I would agree with some of the sentiment expressed about Dana. When I first went into the office there for an election, Dana was at the window and was very helpful, didn't know whether I was a Democrat or Republican. She was very helpful. I'm very concerned about elections myself, because in 2018, I ran and lost an election by 14 votes here in Pinell County. And I thought something wasn't quite right because, because some of the statements that were made. Another elected official recently told me that they thought I actually had won that election, but maybe provisionals weren't counted or something, it's such a close vote. So I'm very, I'm very concerned about our elections. And my screen, I had a couple points on my screen that is locked up here. But we have acted hastily in making decisions in the past. And so I'm going to make, I don't know if it's time to make a friendly amendment, or if this is just discussing, my discussion, my amendment's going to be that we hold off a week and wait for all versions of the MOU to come forward, maybe even schedule a special session next week, and make sure we are, have legally dotted our i's and crossed our t's. And that is a concern to me, that we're, we would vote on something and then have the Attorney General give us special attention. We don't need that. So that would be my recommendation, is, is to have a special session next week, or get legal advice to make the, make the motion that Mr. McClure made effective only when we have a, a, a full MOU. We're kind of getting this, into this uncertain legal territory. We're voting on something, we don't have the, the document isn't written yet, right?
But we do have the understanding there'll be a second vote to approve the MOU.
Okay. Is that proper, is that the proper way to do it, Mr. Volkmann?
Mr. Keller?
Supervisor, sorry, Supervisor Kavanaugh, yes. And that's exactly what was done the previous time. In order for legal to draft that MOU, we will need direction from this board as to, where do you want to put that authority? Do you want it, as the motion is drafted, to go to the recorder? Do you want it to reside under the Board of Supervisors? So that's one of the key parts that I believe you really need to take action on today. If we are going to follow up in a special session, or within 30 days, whatever time period it you, you want us to, to have that MOU. And if there's certain things that you want us to try to incorporate in that MOU, you know, we're happy to do that in a special session, work session, or however you want to do that.
Well, between now and the MOU, who's operating the Elections Department? So if, if we vote today on it, and we execute, you know, it's executed in a month, and is, is Ms. Lewis capable and authorized to then operate for the next month?
Chair, Ken Volker, Pinell County Attorney. Supervisor Kavanaugh, yes. If this board were to put it under Dana, it would be Dana. Ms. Lewis would be operating with the control without any MOU in place, setting those boundaries up. But until that MOU is done, yes, she would be the sole person that is in charge of the Elections Department until all of the terms of the MOU are come together, come together, excuse me.
Okay, and you said you, that's under draft right now?
We have multiple versions, so I've, you know, we've got a copy of, for example, Yuma's, who has a very different model where they actually have like a board oversight, similar to what maybe some of the people were referring to here. We've got a copy of, I believe, the Helen Purcell model, which was used in Maricopa for a number of years. We've got a handful of MOUs that, that we essentially need to get this direction from the board, that we will not recreate the wheel, but instead pick the pieces that are relevant and make sure that they're compliant with Arizona law. We have the opinion from Cochise County, that some of the problems that were identified in Cochise County, so we can make sure we can avoid, avoid those. So we have bits and pieces. I don't know that we have a working document at this moment, but we certainly have all of the cornerstones, if you will, to, to develop that in relatively short order.
So there's no legal harm? If we should vote on this today in the affirmative, there's no legal harm in letting the MOU issue go until the next meeting, which is, I think, in four or five weeks?
I see no, Chair, I see no legal harm. Obviously, you don't want it to go indefinitely, because then there's no sort of understanding of what the guardrails or what the expectations are, but it certainly would not create any harm as long as we're not getting closer to the election moving forward. But again, that, that's purely a board decision. We take, legal takes no position on that, we're just following your will.
Okay. Thank you.
Supervisor Miller, do you want to weigh in?
Yes, just if I may, I support this, this motion. I don't see any harm in the next, even four weeks of Dana handling the Elections Department without an MOU. We have a previous MOU that we used years ago, and it's clear that the county attorney's office has access to others. We can put it together, and, and we'll all have an opportunity to review it before we vote on it. We can debate that until we get it to a satisfactory position of the Board of Supervisors.
Thank you. The lovely Supervisor Goodman?
I don't get called that at home, but I appreciate it. You know, as far as weighing in on this, you know, we heard Mrs. Lewis's, Ms. Lewis's comments that she made earlier, and what her plans are moving forward, and working on the MOU, and bringing in a task force and other stakeholders, and making them a part of putting this MOU together, if I'm not mistaken, with what she was alluding, what she was suggesting and talking about. The bottom line is, is we need to really, I'm not, I wasn't happy at all with our last director at all. The communication, I think Ms. Peters probably said something that was accurate for both of our previous, for multiple directors that we've had in the past, the lack of communication and with us as a whole, and only having communication with one of us and things of that nature, and not dissipating that information to the rest of us. You know, I appreciated the gentleman that came up and said the buck stops with them, with you, the voters, and that's, that's something that is absolutely correct, and that we need to... The bottom line is, we have a distrust in our system right now. We do. And we've got to move forward, and, and unfortunately, it requires us to make decisions quickly, to pivot, to do the things that are necessary in order to correct it and regain the confidence of our voters. I support the motion with a caveat that, and I don't know if we need to put that in as an amendment, because obviously, it's already been stated that the MOU's going to be, there's going to be various input by a lot of the stakeholders and so on and so forth, and I'm thinking that Dana's already started to do a lot of that already, when you look at the support that's here right now for her. And so I'm not sure we need to do any kind of amendment to it moving forward. I think Supervisor Miller just made a comment that the MOU itself will require another vote on our part, and that can be debated at that time, the processes and things of that nature. So if everybody's ready, I'm willing, I'm willing to second that motion.
Be good with your motion? All right. I'm going to look for a second then.
I second it.
Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Aye.
Were there any opposed? Okay. And that's unanimous? We will then get to work on getting the MOU written for further approval. I was going to try to get through the Flood Library and Public Health without a break, but I think it calls for a recess. ...to several parties and a lot of the folks in the audience. And especially today with, we're doing budget, and possibly we did some things that aren't even budgeted for. So, Mr. Volkmann, would this be a good time for you to explain what you want to hear in this, in this motion to clear it up?
So ideally, I think there are four parts to the motion that, that I would like to see from a legal perspective. One would be the clear language delegating administrative responsibilities for the election to the Recorder's Office. Again, that's the administrative side, and then that's sort of formally moving the administration portion over. Secondly, this board would have to grant explicit authority to the recorder to supervise county employees, because the Elections Department are county employees, so if they're over her, she would need to have that supervisory authority explicitly granted. There would need to be a third component that would authorize the county manager to reallocate budget resources as necessary, because we're giving her these responsibilities without a corresponding budget increase. And I did speak with County Manager Lou, and he said certainly, he understands, and he probably has the ability to do it anyways, but I think in the motion, that would make sense. And then finally, that there would be, subject to a future MOU that will be approved at a later date. I would ask you to give us the date certain, if I had my wishes, if we can.
Well, I wish you'd have spoken up earlier when I asked that very specific question. Thank you.
So there's two, there's two supervisor, Chair Supervisor Kavanaugh, there's two parts to it. So there, there's the administratively moving it over, giving her the authority, making sure there's budget allocation, but then also setting a future date. Given what we're hearing, given that there's not been a ton of very clear directive from this board, I would ask that we not set this in a week. I would ask that we just set it at the next regularly scheduled, scheduled Board of Supervisors meeting. That would give us about 30 days. I think that's enough time for hopefully Dana to work with the team, to get people together, and to really figure out what needs to be included and what shouldn't be included.
You're talking about the MOU, not the motion today?
The MOU, I'm sorry, that's correct.
Yes, okay.
How about if I restate my motion?
Let's wait, let's a little bit more. So Natasha, follow along with, with procedure here. We've already approved that motion. Do we need a motion to rescind that one before we then go to another motion?
You can reconsider, reconsider.
Reconsider.
Yes.
And also, can you give us the schedule of meetings coming up so that in this motion we can set a time?
Yes. Chairman, the next supervisor meeting is going to be August the 2nd.
And after that?
August the 16th. Well, we do have a work session that we could turn to a special session on August the 10th.
So I think those two would be fine.
Mr. Chairman, I would move that we reconsider item 10 and open it again for discussion. Is that appropriate, Natasha?
Okay, so we're already kind of, we're discussing it already, but, so let's, let's reopen that and... Second to that motion? Is there a second for that motion?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Mr. Miller with us?
Yep, I voted aye.
Okay. You're very quiet. Okay, all, any opposed? So we're, we're back to discussing, which we already have been. Okay, so we have those dates. We have a clearer understanding of what needs to be in this for budgetary constraints. And thank you, everyone, for your patience. We've taken, we've come this far, this much time, and this much time wrapped up in this today. Let's not hurry through this, let's get this correct, so...
Mr. Chair, is there more discussion? Otherwise, I'd make a motion at this point.
I don't have any more discussion. Anybody have any more discussion?
I'm good.
We're good?
I do.
Okay.
So you're asking us for clear language to delineate responsibilities to the Recorder's Office with respect to item 10, correct?
Correct.
What is the appropriate language for that? I don't have it on my screen. Oh, he's got his screen, okay. So you've given, you've given the clear and correct language to Supervisor McClure?
I think I said it, I, without hearing what he has to say, I can't tell you if that, that is exactly, I mean, it needs, it doesn't need to be precise verbatim, but it needs to just be clear that we're, you're delegating administrative responsibilities to the recorder.
It's a clarification, to make sure.
Okay. And the same is true of the authority?
The supervisory authority, correct?
Okay.
And then the authority to the county manager to reallocate budget as necessary, and then finally, a return date for the MOU to be completed and presented to the board for potential adoption.
On a date certain.
Correct.
So, Mr. Chair, with that, I'd make a motion to place the Elections Department under the county Recorder's Office to report to the county manager, and then to the Board of Supervisors, with the memorandum of understanding to be reviewed at no more than two years in a non-election... with a memorandum of understanding to be reviewed at no more than two years in a non-election year and to fill the election director or manager operations, manager of operations and instructing the county attorney's office to prepare a memorandum of understanding with the county recorder if necessary, delineating Board of Supervisors statutory election-related responsibilities, activities, the board wishes to fall under the responsibility of the county recorder and establishing clear expectations and deliverables to authorize the county manager to reallocate budget resources if necessary and for the MOU as well for a date certain, almost certain, August 2nd or August 16th, depending on the timing. Is that clear enough?
I still think we need explicitly vesting supervisory authority to the recorder over county employees.
And to vest supervisor authority to the county recorder on county employees.
Okay. Is there a second to that excellent motion?
Thank you, sir. Just to be clear, and just to be clear, the recorder does not hire the directions, the direction, or the Elections Director. That's just to be clear in that statement.
Okay.
Are we good? Is that, is that, are you comfortable with that motion?
That's, that's the board's motion. I mean, we can comply with it. It's not legally, there, there's no legal prohibition to the motion that's been presented.
I'll second it.
All in favor?
Aye.
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 Any opposed? And the ayes have it on that one.
Thank you, board.
Okay. Okay, I'm going to convene, do I need to gavel to go into Flood? Natasha, or just say it?
You should gavel.
Okay. So I'm going to suspend that meeting and go into Flood Control. And do I have a motion on the consent agenda?
Mr. Chair, I'd like to make a motion that we approve items A, B, and C on the consent items as presented.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Aye.
And the ayes have it. And there's a public hearing on the discussion for the.
No, memory, library.
Oh, yeah, I'll go into the library, okay.
Number two, there is a public hearing on.
Yeah, we have number two.
There's a public.
There's one for, uh.
Yeah, we have to approve the budget for the flood, correct?
Yes.
Yeah, so we, a public hearing on the budget for the flood control.
Good afternoon, Chairman Serti.
Yes.
Members of the board, Angie Woods, Director of the Office of Budget and Finance, have an agenda item before you today for a public hearing, truth and taxation hearing to comply with section 48 dash 254 of Arizona revised statute. Penal County Flood Control District has notified its property tax payers that the flood control district's intention is to raise the secondary property taxes over last year's level. The Penal County Flood Control District's, District is proposing an increase in secondary property taxes of $176,294 or 3.8%. Essentially, the proposed tax increase will cause Penal County Flood Control District's separate, secondary property taxes on a $100,000 home to be $16.93. Without the proposed tax increase, the total taxes that would have been owed on a $100,000 home would have been 1631, so a difference of 62 cents. So at this time, I have no, no other items to present.
Any questions or discussion?
Mr. Chair, just, just to be clear, this is not, I mean, it is an increase only because of inflationary values. This is not an increase of the tax rate itself. Is that correct?
Chairman Serti, Vice Chair McClure, the, the rate is not changing. However, the valuations of the property have increased, therefore, when you do the calculation, the, um, the levy actually increases.
Correct, I understand that. Thank you.
Okay. This is a public hearing. Would anyone like to speak on this issue? Seeing none, I'll close the public hearing and ask for a motion.
Mr. Chair, I'd like to make a motion that we approve item number two as presented.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Aye.
Ayes have it.
Chairman.
Do a roll call?
Yes, sir.
Got to be a roll call. Okay, back to that.
Supervisor Miller?
Aye.
Supervisor Kavanaugh?
Aye.
Supervisor Goodman?
Aye.
Vice Chairman McClure?
Aye.
Chairman Serti?
Aye.
That motion passes unanimously.
Okay. Out of Flood Control and into the Library. Is there a motion on the consent agenda?
Mr. Chairman, I move that we approve.
Yeah, go ahead.
Item A on the consent agenda as presented.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Aye.
Ayes have that. And public hearing on the budget for the Library.
Again, Chairman Serti, Angie Woods, Office of Budget and Finance, in compliance with section 48 dash 254 of Arizona revised statute, we have notified our property taxpayers of the Penal County Library District's intention to raise its secondary property taxes over last year's level. The Penal County Library District has proposed an increase in secondary property taxes in the amount of $144,204, which is a 4.78% increase. The proposed tax increase will cause the Penal County Library District's secondary property taxes on a $100,000 home to be $9.65. Without the proposed tax increase, the total taxes that would have been owed on that $100,000 home would have been $9.21, so a difference of 44 cents.
Any discussion? This is a public hearing. Would anyone like to talk about this? Seeing none, I'll close the public hearing and ask for a roll call vote.
You need a motion?
Can we get the motion and second?
Motion, yes. And then a roll call vote.
Mr. Chair, I make a motion that we approve item number two as presented.
Second.
All in favor? Aye. All call, I'm sorry. I'm like, you know when the pilots, when your plane is late and you try to make up the time? It's what I'm trying to do for the rest of the meeting, so.
You got the headwind, huh?
Yeah.
Supervisor Miller?
Aye.
Supervisor Kavanaugh?
Aye.
Supervisor Goodman?
Aye.
Vice Chairman McClure?
Aye.
Chairman Serti?
Aye.
That motion passes unanimously.
Out of Library and into Public Health. Consent agenda, is there a motion?
Mr. Chairman, I move that we approve the consent agenda, items A through C as presented.
Second.
Is, all in favor?
Aye. Aye. Aye.
Any opposed? Ayes have it. No budget for health? Right? Okay. So we'll reconvene back into the regular meeting. Item number 14, discussion approval, disapproval of the Minpin Ranch.
Good afternoon, Glenn Bach here, Senior Planner. This would be for approval of wireless new facility known, known as Minpin Ranch. It sits on about 22 acres northwest of Arizona Farms and the Southern Pacific Railroad. There's, uh, the stipulations of approval following that and then including placement of, of several trees to help additional stealth for the facility. And I'd be happy to answer any questions supervisors may have.
Are there any questions or discussion? Okay, this is a public hearing. Would anyone like to speak on this? Seeing none, I'll close the public hearing and ask for a motion.
Mr. Chairman, I move that we approve item number 14 as presented.
If, if we can just state in that motion with the 17 stipulations.
Forgive me. Mr. Chairman, I move that we approve item number 14 as presented, including 17 stipulations.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye. Aye. Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Number 15, public hearing, disapproval, approval of resolution number 2023 regarding.
It's an industrial use permit.
Yes.
Good afternoon, Chairman, Vice Chair, and both members. Sangita Deuker, Senior Planner, presenting this case, however, with the request of the applicant, the applicant would like to postpone the hearing for this case. They, that's the request from them, so, but if you would still like to have the presentation, we can move forward. They are not here to present it. They're requesting for 16th of August hearing.
So I think it'd be appropriate to ask for a motion to.
Continue.
Yes.
Mr. Chair, I move that we continue item 15 to August.
Do we have to have a public hearing?
Yes.
Okay, this is a public hearing. Would anyone like to talk about this? Seeing none, I'll close the public hearing and go to the motion.
Mr. Chair, I move that we, would it be appropriate postpone or to continue?
Continue.
Continue item 15 until August 15th?
August 16th.
16th.
And it's going to be with a public hearing?
With a public hearing. Thank you.
Is there a second? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Aye.
Any opposed? Ayes have it. Item number 16, discussion approval, disapproval of Langley Heritage. Sangita.
Good afternoon, once again, Chairman, Vice Chair, and both members. This is another wireless communication facilities. It is called the Langley Heritage, SUP 00223. This, this was a special use permit requesting installing of wireless communication in CR1 Zone. Size of the parcel is 18.12 acres. Location is south of East Heritage Road and west of Cooper Basin Railway. We have the owner applicant, Langley, Langley Heritage LLC, and Declan is the agent applicant for this one. The county map showing the location for this SUP, one can see it's just north of Florence. Existing zoning is CR1 and it's been shown, the existing zoning, surrounding zoning with the town of Florence to the south and CR3 to the north, CI1 to the north, and it's along the rail. This is the aerial map showing further location of this. It's a portion of the large parcel and it's in the northern portion of this parcel and it's the mining area to the south. It's all the rest, Zone CR1, likelihood of this moving forward with residences is, is going to be really remote and would take a long time.
An explanation to the, those watching, ordinarily, we have a screen up here, which we don't have today, so we are having to watch it the same way you do. So bear with us if we ask for clarification.
Sure. So this is the area map showing the hatched portion, which also shows the demarcation of the people or the property owners that were intimated further zooming into the surrounding zoning area, CR1, the large parcel. You can see that Florence on the eastern portion, private land, state land to the west. North has R7 and CR3 zoning. It's kind of separated on the eastern portion by the rail. Area map showing number of owners that were intimated within the stipulated notification area. And one can see that really large parcels, its development is only towards the further east portion, again, demarcated or kind of separated by the rail. Coverage map which shows without the wireless communication facility, one can see that in the red circle and then the difference with the, with adding that wireless communication increases the coverage maps for T-Mobile. The site plan showing the, the access to the site, this is a portion of the parcel to the north portion, north side, and accesses from the west. One can see they've followed all the regulations that are expected with the eight feet compound wall and the, the tower within that. This is the, the way it's going to look like its stealth facility and one can see that in the detailed site plan. It further moves forward with direct building permits. It has, this is what the Monopine broadleaf. Some pictures taken towards the north, you can see that, I'm sorry. North, south, which shows the rail, towards the east and the west. Some items for consideration, stealth design visual appeal in the CR1 residential zone. Location is apt in an area with really no negative impact. Parcel being proposed for houses unlikely due to the mining area to the south for a very long time. No houses really in the proximity. Traffic impacts for wireless communication facilities are pretty minimal with occasional maintenance that is required. Coverage map shows increase in coverage for the, for the area. We received no letters in opposition and planning and zoning recommendation to forward to the board with 16 stipulations as presented in the staff report shared with you. I'm open for any questions and we also have the applicant if you have any further questions for this.
Are there any questions? Do we want to hear from the applicant?
They don't have a, the applicant does not have a presentation.
Okay. This is a public hearing. Would anyone like to talk on this item? Seeing none, I'll close the public hearing and ask for a motion.
Mr. Chairman, I move that we approve item 16 as presented with 16 stipulations.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? And the ayes have it.
Thank you.
Just real, real quick, I know where I can go get my Christmas tree next time, though.
Or, or pick up pine cones.
Or pick up pine cones, yeah.
Item 17, public approval, disapproval of, non-major comprehensive plan to redesignate 80 acres.
Ah, there we are. Okay. Good afternoon, once again. So Glenn Bach here, Senior Planner, here to present North Florence 80.
Glenn, if I may, before you get started, Chairman, if I may, just announce that items 17, 18, and 19 will be heard and discussed together.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, with that, the first case is a PZPA 00322, which is a minor comprehensive plan amendment to take the property from moderate low-density residential to medium-density residential. The second, PZ 00922, is a rezone request to go from GR, general rural zone, to R7, single residence zone. And the last case is PZPD 009-22, and this will be for the PAD overlay for, for the property. So this property here, it consists, I believe, of approximately 298 lots on 80 acres, and I'll take through the slide here. This, this first slide here discusses that summary there of what the three cases are dealing with. And the subject site is located northwest corner of Magma and north of Hiscox Road, about a mile north of Arizona Farms and a half mile east of Cooper. 298 lots, there's two different products with, with that. Map showing the general vicinity of the property. Aerial map and the current and proposed zoning of the property. Comprehensive plan designation currently and proposed. And here's the, the layout of the, of the proposed. And, and, and planning and zoning commission recommendation was unanimous, 920 in favor for all three.
Just so I'm, got my bearings right, is that Magma Ranch to the north of it?
I believe so, yes.
So staff would be happy
So, staff would be happy to entertain any questions.
Are there any questions or discussion? This is on all three items, correct?
Correct.
You're talking about all of them now. Okay, this is a public hearing on seventeen, eighteen and nineteen. Would anyone like to be heard on this? Hearing seeing none, I'll close the public hearing and ask for one motion at a time on item number seventeen.
Mr. Chair, I'd like to make a motion that we approve item number seventeen with no stipulations as presented.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any opposed? Ayes have it. Is there a motion on number eighteen?
Mr. Chair, I'd like to make a motion that we approve item number eighteen with one stipulation.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Aye.
Any opposed? Ayes have it. Item number nineteen.
Mr. Chair, I'd like to make a motion that we approve item number nineteen. Planning Commission recommended approval unanimously nine to zero with twelve stipulations.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Ayes have it. Item number twenty, the public hearing, discussion approval, disapproval to establish a portion of Thornton Road as a county highway. Chris Wannamaker. Natasha, while he's coming up, I see the numbers on P and Z are up to nine now. Is ten a full board?
Yes, Chairman, that is correct. Each supervisor has two appointees.
So, with it, that's as high as we've been lately, because we have been lacking, right? So, we are getting those position filled?
Yes.
Thank you.
All right. Good afternoon, Chairman, members of the board. Yes, this item is to establish Thornton Road as a county road, and this is to support the lucid development and also to allow for our project for the Thornton Road improvements. That was awarded to a contractor earlier at this board meeting. If there's any questions, let me know.
Are there any questions? This is a public hearing. Would anyone like to speak on this? Seeing none, I'll close the public hearing and ask for a motion.
Mr. Chairman, I move that we approve item number twenty as presented.
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Ayes have it. Twenty-one, public hearing on abandoning part of Prospector Road. It's the last. Is not here, so Joe or Chris, this is a public hearing also?
Hoping she's going to sneak in the back door, but I'll take it. Joe Ortiz, Penile County Public Works Deputy Director. Good afternoon, Chairman, Vice Chair, Board. This is a request for an abandonment of Prospector Road between McKellips Boulevard and Mining Camp Street. This is in the one-north, eight-east area of Apache Junction. The request has, applicant has come before us. Her name is Andrea Short. She lives at one-five-zero-four-nine Applebee Road. And her request is to make this abandonment so she can have a larger envelope for construction that she wants to build on the site. Currently, there's no legal access or physical road on this location. We don't have any plans to make any improvements physically. I think it would be kind of tough and expensive to, to make those improvements. Like I said, we do not currently maintain the road, and the petitioner did get the proper signatures of a hundred percent adjoining property owners. And all surrounding utilities have been notified, and no objections.
I live up there. It looks like somebody already built a house in the easement.
Potentially may be the case. This, this is kind of a housekeeping cleaning item as well, so. As you can see, the location hashed, hashed out here in the purple is the requested abandonment.
That sounds like my area.
Any discussion? This is a public hearing. Would anyone like to be heard on this? Seeing none, I'll close the public hearing and ask for a motion.
Mr. Chairman, I move that we approve item number twenty-one as presented.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Twenty-two, determination of an agreement to sublease the Union Pacific Railroad. Joe?
Good afternoon, Joe Ortiz, Penile County Public Works Deputy Director. Good afternoon, Board. This is technically another housekeeping type of item. This is a, an old request, old agreement that Penile County went into back in two-thousand-and-one in the, back then it was not the city of Maricopa, but outside the, the limits of the railroad. Union Pacific Railroad came to us, or we went into agreement with Union Pacific Railroad as the lease or, and there was National Railroad Passenger Corporation as the leasee, and we were a subleasee in this agreement. Basically, that agreement went into effect back in two-thousand-and-one, so the county could help construct and maintain a passenger platform. Not sure if you remember, but there was the Zephyr Rail Car that was out there. That was at that point in time that gave us the permission to go ahead and put that in place. Since that point in time, several years have gone by, and the rail car is no longer there, and we were approached by Union Pacific that Amtrak would like to make some improvements out there. So, in order to clean it up, we need to terminate that old agreement, so Amtrak can come in and take care of their business of what they need to make their improvements. So, with that, staff is requesting the termination.
Any discussion? I'll ask for a motion.
Mr. Chairman, I move that we approve item number twenty-two as presented.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? In that case. Number twenty-three is a work session item, presentation discussion from Public Works about a design manual. Steve Abraham.
Thank you, Board Members. Mr. Chair, today, first, thanks for meeting with us on the twenty-twenty-three Penile County Subdivision and Infrastructure Design Manual. This is the long anticipated and oft worked upon update to our subdivision infrastructure design manual that was originally adopted back in two-thousand-and-eight as part of the subdivision regulations, which was also a substantial update back then. So, what is the subdivision manual? Well, it's the companion document to Title II and Title III and the Flood Plane Management Ordinance and a whole battery of codes and ordinances that help the, the development community specify public improvements and also what goes on these plans to make sure that they get adopted. There we go. It is going to be completely re-envisioned, reformatted. That's the cover of it right there compared to that legislative version you have in your packets today. And another series of updates will be is that it will make it a more digital-friendly document. It will be indexed and hopefully be easier to use online for the preparation of plans. So, it performs three functions. It sets forth the Penile County standards and policies for infrastructure design, and as I said before, assists in the preparation of technical plans and reports for submittal and approval by Penile County, primarily in the subdivision review part, and that would be for both residential and commercial subdivisions. It also has impacts on the site plan review process, which is your commercial and industrial plan approval process. So, the twenty-twenty-three manual clarifies and supplements, and that's the more extensive list from what I've stated earlier. Also provides guidance and direction to development community in preparation of those subdivision plats and infrastructure improvement plans, primarily for public infrastructure that the county will end up owning and maintaining at some point in the future. The subdivision infrastructure design manual references several other technical and engineering manuals from ADOT, McDOT, MAG, ASHTO, to name a few, and those manuals have been updated several times since two-thousand-and-eight. So, what's changed? So, in that legislative version you have in your packets, there's a lot, and we'd be here probably till September going over every single change that is in that document. But I can say with absolute certainty that they fall into two general categories. Specifications for those public improvements and, and to a certain degree, some onsite improvements as well, and then the submittal requirements. How do you put together a TIA that's acceptable on that, that first review? Subdivision plat, final plat, submittal procedures? The, and how do you get those, those plans through in relative ease? So, there are some new things. One is there's a new section on accessing public right-of-way, traffic calming, street signage and traffic signals, street lighting, a completely new chapter to address ongoing issues with energy consumption and/or dark sky. And then also a section on material testing, which goes back to the fact that basically the county ends up paying and assuming control of these public improvements, so we want to make sure that they're very high quality when they are initially brought into the system. Now, some things to consider as part of this work session and as this adoption process matures over the next couple of months. The design manual provides specifications for required improvements, not if the improvement is actually required. So, it's, I think a safe analogy would be, it's, this isn't really the, what's on the menu, it's more the recipe for the items on the menu. Time, time to talk about what's on the menu is going to be coming up shortly here. Title III and Title II are both being substantially amended as well, and those will be time to talk about those improvements and the specifications and requirements therein. Now, these are standards for construction design in the public right-of-way. As I've said a couple of times, the county will ultimately be responsible. And then also very particular is that they're engineering and standards-based, so it's an engineering discussion, and we hope that the public outreach process will show that there's some engineering conversations if there's any issues with some of the standards that are therein contained. So, public involvement, some process, basically website, newspaper, your, your typical battery of outreach. The public outreach starts tomorrow, and we're anticipating a public hearing in August for adoption. It's already up on the website in a draft form. It's, there's the website there. Also, some, some quick procedural notes. This process or this item is being decoupled from the previous effort of updating it with the subdivision regulations. Subdivision regulations are right behind this effort here. The folks in Public Works are, and the plan reviewers and folks out in the field are saying that these, these are much needed and need some haste behind some of these requirements because it's affecting day-to-day operations. Also, Title II, that'll be a little bit later. That's your zoning ordinance, that update that the Community Development Department's currently looking at. And it's also being decoupled from the Title II reference effort about the Community Design Handbook, which was only briefly looked at by the Planning and Zoning Commission several months ago. So, be happy to answer any questions or any specifics or any process questions or anything that happens to be on your mind. Thank you.
Are there any questions? And when will we hear back on the progress of this?
I'm expecting August. So, your first meeting in August, which I believe is the tenth, the second, that might be a little too soon, but we'll, we'll try for an adoption date in August. We'll, we'll recap the public outreach and if, hopefully be able for, for adoption and if anything's needed, we can always continue and discuss about it further.
Anyone?
Just real quick, Mr. Chairman, Mr. Abraham, when you were talking about materials earlier, you're talking about things that the county may take over in the future.
That's correct.
So, are we talking about roadway thickness and all that type of thing? Yeah.
We are, from, from the sub base all the way up to the Fox Hill.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Item twenty-four, discussion approval, disapproval of the Penile County Compensation Plan. Mary Ellen Shepherd.
So, you know it's tough when she brings reinforcements, right?
Oh, yeah. Chairman, Surti, members of the board, Mary Ellen Shepherd, Deputy County Manager. Joining me today is Colleen Campbell. She is our interim HR Deputy Director. Today, we seek your approval of the fiscal year twenty-twenty-three, twenty-twenty-four Employee Compensation Plan to include a five percent across-the-board increase for all eligible employees. The five percent, we believe, is warranted to both acknowledge and reward our workforce and to remain competitive with the average salary increase planned for our competitors and the counties across the state. Before presenting the plan for approval, however, we want to take a moment to provide you with a brief overview of the state of HR in the county. The purpose in doing so is to lay the foundation for the across-the-board increase and other critical recruitment and retention strategies being proposed. Equally, if not more importantly, however, is our desire in the next few minutes to expand how we think about recruitment and retention of a quality workforce beyond pay and even beyond HR. The reason we believe is pay and HR alone are not enough in this market to be successful. However, when combined with your support and the commitment of leadership countywide to infocus on the employee experience, we believe we will continue to move forward in a positive direction. Which one? Thank you. Our objectives for today's presentation is to detail critical HR trends, not just what's happening here, but what's happening across the country to give context, identify key HR roles and really how those had to change to be adapted to the changing nature of the workforce. Highlight our fiscal year twenty-twenty-two, twenty-twenty-three key focus areas and results to let you know the progress we have made based upon the commitments we shared with you last year. Share highlights, look ahead, what's next in fiscal year twenty-three and twenty-four. And at this point, a key important objective is to acknowledge the HRT team and all those in the county committed to make this a great place to work and live. And if you would allow me, I believe the HR team is here, I'd ask them to stand. They're an incredible group of people who have done incredible work, as you will see shortly. Thank you for allowing me to do that. And then our goal is also to encourage all the support efforts to be held accountable for creating an exceptional employee experience, and then ultimately to obtain your approval of the fiscal year twenty-twenty-four Employee Compensation Plan. I mentioned the importance of speaking about trends, and in talking about trends, it's important to understand and have our eyes wide open regarding today's workplace challenges. All across the country and particularly in public sector organizations, there's a shortage of workers. Many factors play into why that is true, but true it is. And as a result, everyone is having to approach workers and work differently. And keeping the employees we have is key, especially the high performers and those valued employees that keep the county running. Because there are less workers, employers have to do two things. Basically, focus heavily on meeting the needs of their current employees and creating opportunities for them to obtain new skills and grow careers. Innovative, high-performing companies are partnering with educational institutions and creating their own programs for learning, skill development and career advancements. Organizations have to be more agile, looking for skills and attributes versus specific education or experience. This is going to be a challenge for us in public sector with established merit rules. How do we open the door to opportunity and comply with merit principles while providing for open competitive recruitments and selections based upon objective business-related criteria and also. and also ensure flexibility and innovation are prevalent? Other trends identified for this year and beyond, which aren't new but nonetheless relevant, workers want work with a purpose. They are no longer willing to sacrifice their health and well-being for just pay. Compensation practices need to be transparent and fair. Leaders and managers matter. If you want employees to stay and stay engaged, invest in equipping leadership and managers with the skills and the commitment to value employees as their most prized customers. To keep up with the changing nature of the work and the workforce, the role of HR has had to change. Key roles include strategic partners. Do we have the right people in the right place doing the right thing in the most effective way possible? Talent acquisition has to be front and center. Strategies, tactics, processes for effectively identifying, recruiting, selecting, hiring, and onboarding the customer surface focus, employees with the skills and competencies the county needs. Talent management, strategies, tactics, and processes for engaging, developing, and retaining employees to meet current and future needs and what this means. Learning and development. Performance management, finding ways to help employees to do their best work. Career planning, succession planning, and recognition. Total rewards, this is beyond compensation and benefits, although those are critical. It's both a monetary and non-monetary employee incentives. Personal development, wellness, leave time, tuition reimbursement, career development, and recognition are also included. The county's success is directly influenced by the health and well-being of its employees. This has to be a key HR role, ensuring safety and well-being. And then ultimately, our foundation is based on compliance, but it's listed last for a reason. It's not compliance and rules that matter the most. It's the people and how we treat them and the opportunities we provide. All of these roles tie together to achieve our mission. And they all come together to reflect the employee value proposition. And in its simplest terms, what this means is, what do we offer in the way of value? Pay benefits, a future culture growth and opportunity to make working for Pinal worth our employees' time, worth their energy and their commitment. It's not just pay. It's really a matter of mutual respect, work-life balance, opportunities for growth and connection, healthy work environments, reputation, and purpose. It is the ability to add value and be valued throughout a career. What makes Pinal County uniquely the place to be so employees can do their best, do their best work, work with the best, and serve the highest purpose? If Pinal County can't answer these questions and genuinely deliver, applicants will find someplace else that can. As you can imagine, this shift in focus and cultures knows much, but the work has begun. In the interest of time, today we'll focus on three key areas: talent acquisition, total rewards, and talent management. And to start us off with talent acquisition, it is my privilege and pleasure to ask Colleen Campbell to come up and share her work and the work of her team. We are fortunate to have brought her on board. She has extensive experience in talent acquisition and what it takes to bring quality people onboard and keep quality people doing quality work. Colleen?
Thank you, Mary Ellen. Chairman Sertie, members of the board, good afternoon. Colleen Campbell, HR Division Manager for Employer Services. Thanks for giving me the opportunity to give you an update on our efforts in talent acquisition. Our initiatives are crucial in aligning with our employee value proposition, the employee experience, and strengthening our ability to provide essential services to our community. Today, I'll share some highlights of our achievements in increasing our headcount, attracting a larger number of applicants and qualified applicants, and touch on our enhanced Okay. Looking back at our recruiting priorities from the last fiscal year, our initiatives centered around shining a spotlight on our suite of offerings, engaging in proactive recruiting activities, and expanding our community outreach. Recruiting is an ongoing process that helps us attract the right talent and is the very foundation of the employee lifecycle. These employees, as they embark on their experience as a Pinal County employee, is very important, and how we treat them during that process matters. Over the past fiscal year, our recruitment efforts have yielded positive results. We've been creating a multifaceted approach that includes enhancing our messaging and our brand by showcasing our employee value proposition, expanding our network of partnerships with educational institutions, attending job fairs, partnering with Arizona At Work, and soliciting referrals every chance we get. Just ask our two newest team members on our talent acquisition team, Chris Middleton and Jonathan Bouvier. Together, they bring with them over 30 years of recruiting experience, and we're looking forward to the many contributions they'll make to our talent acquisition results. You can see here, our enhanced branding and messaging efforts highlight the attractive aspects of working for Pinal County. They've played a crucial role in generating interest among potential candidates. By showcasing our investment and commitment to employee well-being and benefits, community impact, and work-life balance, we are well on our way to position ourselves as an employer of choice, resulting in a larger pool of applicants for us to choose from. In deploying these strategies, we've witnessed a significant rise in candidate interest. While public sector applications are down 56% overall, Pinal County's had over a 27% increase in the number of qualified applicants, as well as over a 17% increase in the number of hires. A small victory in the total number of unique applicants, rising just 1.5%, but a 22% increase overall in the total number of applications received. An overview of our recruiting efforts shown in this graph visually demonstrate the growth we've seen in applicant interest in the past few years. Since 2019, we've experienced almost a 25% increase in the number of unique applications and a 53% increase in the number of hires. So who's joining Pinal County? Attracting younger generations has been a specific focus of our talent acquisition initiatives. We understand that the expectations and priorities of millennials and Gen Z provide or differ from those of previous generations. And we've aligned our branding to appeal to the needs of this changing workforce, and we've experienced increased levels in the number of Gen Z new hires. And along with them, they bring fresh perspectives, innovation, and energy to our county. As you can see from our employee headcount numbers, we stand at 2,096 total employees with 422 of those employees in the judicial branch. This represents an increase of 10% over 2022 and almost 13% over 2021. In spite of the Great Resignation, Pinal County demonstrated remarkable growth. In summary, our efforts have yielded significant positive outcomes with many more to come. We have increased our headcount, received a larger number of applications, attracted more qualified applicants overall, and we attracted a healthy amount of them in our desirable demographics. I'll turn it back over to Mary Ellen.
Thank you, Colleen. Our next slide represents our focus on total rewards. Total rewards encompasses five key elements: compensation, benefits, flexibility, well-being, and career development. For today's purpose, we'll focus on compensation and well-being. In fiscal year 2023, we set our goals to continue and expand upon what works, to include market-driven across-the-board increases, continued pay flexibility, policy updates, and expanded welfare, wellness activities. We made progress with a special thanks to Danielle Watkins and her team who oversee our employee benefits and wellness group, and Kim Verdugo and Courtney Obregon, who are our comp team. We acknowledge more needs to be done, but we're grateful for the efforts. Some of the highlights supporting our progress include greater options for part-time employees. We implemented the limited-term employment agreement. We also, thanks to this board, approved part-time healthcare benefits that are effective this fiscal year. Our wellness activities increased by 200%, and we procured a new provider to provide enhanced employee assistance services and learning opportunities to promote health, wellness, and growth. In fiscal year 2022-2023, we also offered the 6% across-the-board increase based upon what was happening in the market. That was an adjustment to the base or a one-time lump sum. And when we think about what traditionally had been offered in Pinal County was 2.5%, this represented a significant departure and a recognition of the changing market environment and our willingness to stay current and competitive. We also completed 93, and by completed, fully implemented market studies and placement and range adjustments. We completed 74 additional market studies that were just pending final placement and range adjustments, and then we have 12 additional market reviews for a total of 179 of our job classifications evaluated, which was 136% increase over the previous fiscal year. We updated our compensation plan maintenance policy, which allowed us to focus on our competitors, not traditional comparators who weren't the groups we were losing people to or attracting people from. This board approved the cost of healthcare be absorbed by the county, which meant the financial burden was not past our employees. We also introduced a total compensation calculator for our employees to access to more accurately assess the county's material investment in them. The next area of focus is on talent management. It's our final focus today. Talent management in its most basics terms is how we recruit and develop a workforce that's productive as possible and likely to stay with us for the long term. Simply put, it means investing in our most important resource, our people. Our priorities, again, as we shared with you last year, included ongoing learning and development opportunities, employee recognition and rewards, and employee well-being. Our results towards this end include, as stated earlier, the procurement of a new employee leadership assistance program, which includes external resources to provide leaders and employees with assistance in navigating personal and professional challenges, as well as onsite and virtual training, covering the general areas of leadership, the organization, professional development, stress management, well-being, and a drug-free workplace. We also reintroduce HR liaison training with the focus on strengthening their role as brand ambassadors and their role and responsibility to reinforce everyone's part from line to leadership to contribute to a positive employee experience. Also, in this comp plan, we built in strategies to monetarily incentivize recruitment and retention efforts and encourage all county employees to take an active role in bringing people into the county and encouraging them to stay. We began work to modify employee performance evaluation strategies to encourage the shift to ongoing feedback regarding strengths, opportunities, and career development. We have rewritten our leave and tuition reimbursement policies, which expand offerings for employees, which we plan to bring to you in the next few months for approval. We understand we have a whole lot more to do, but it starts with where we are now. We've experienced a shift in the tenure of our workforce, which is important to call out. Our biggest growth is in the one-to-five-year employees. That growth of approximately 6% is reflected in the reduction in the other areas. So we pay attention and will be in our strategies. How do we keep our employees who we have hired and trained to stay for the long term? And you will see that in our strategies we'll bring forward in the next few months. We acknowledge turnover is still too high. We have not recovered from the Great Resignation, the Great Reshuffle, but our data is showing we are moving in the right direction. Our total turnover for this fiscal year 2023 year-to-date, which included everything but the last pay period in fiscal year 2023, so is fairly reflective, went down from last year's high of 21% to 17.56. And in the footer there, I think it's important, in 2022, a record 50.6 million U.S. workers quit their jobs, accounting for 70% of total separations. This is the highest level in the history of job openings and later turnover survey, which dates back to 2001.
So what, if I may, what's the Great Resignation? What percentage of the Great Resignation is represented here as opposed to ordinary? Have you sort of calculated that?
Chairman Sertie, Supervisor Kavanaugh, no, I have not. And that's a great question. What is reflective of a continuation of that trend of the Great Resignation, the Great Reshuffle, versus what's attributed to our own changes or things we control? It's a brilliant question. I apologize, I don't have that answer. In this next slide, it shows us where we are losing our employees. And it speaks to by the general categories. And what's important, and I really appreciate being able to share with you today, we see that in the categories of health, legal, sheriff, and other, which includes public works. Those rates have actually declined since last year. And legal, sheriff, and other are under 10%, which is our goal. General government, which includes appointed departments and the courts, there's been a slight increase, but that's not surprising. Our efforts around market studies focused on legal, sheriff, public works, and some of the health areas. We've begun in the courts with our adult probation, but we have more work to finish up with respect to their juvenile staff and other staff in the courts. And in general government, candidly, it was a case of focusing in the other areas that we did a disservice to many of our appointed departments in that we have not got an updated market studies for them. Given the trends are moving in the right direction, though, I'm confident that our continued efforts will have the desired results. This is where we're losing by generation. And this is, I'm sharing this because we want to pay attention to it. Our Gen Z, which is our 17- to 26-year-old age group, and our millennials, we have to turn that around because those aren't likely people who are leaving employment altogether. Those are people leaving us. And we have to stop that trend. So those that come to us and see Pinal as a place to work and be, that we continue to reinforce we're the right employer, the smart employer of choice.
May I ask a question?
May I ask a question?
Please.
Because that was your greatest increase in employment or in applications and employment, but also the greatest decrease. Do you attribute that to the fact that they skip around and do this job for, no, and then want to go someplace else? Because there's a lot of tendency in that particular group. I know my kids are that way. They shift from one company to another to another, and I'm just curious if that's what you attribute that to, or if something greater than that?
Chairman Sertie, Supervisor McClure, I think that is a factor. How we view work has changed, and so there isn't the same loyalty or commitment to stay over time, but that's only a part of it. Hopefully, we're leaving you and all of those listening with the message of also a part of it is the entire focus on our employees. They need more flexibility, they want more flexibility, they want career growth and skills building. They are viewing work differently, so it's multifaceted, and really, our approach has to be the same.
Which comes back to our competitors versus comparators and having to look at the private sector and seeing what they do, because our comparators were fairly limited previously, and now looking at the broader spectrum to see what they do to maintain their employee force.
Absolutely. And Chairman Sertie, Supervisor McClure, that is where I have such confidence in the HR team that we have. We have pulled individuals from private sector who are bringing in these ideas and concepts and applying them within our context to use what's best in both worlds to be successful.
So then back to that, that brings our competitive nature and pay into play.
Yes, sir.
Okay, thank you.
Next, please, thank you. So what are we being told about those who are leaving us? And I need to call attention to, this is a very small sample, and so please don't draw any solid conclusions, however it is informative, especially to the extent compensation, lack of advancement opportunities continue to be in the top three. But what also is bringing our attention, causing us to pay attention is work-related stress and burnout. But as we've explained, our strategies are aligned with what you're hearing here. Compensation, we are continuing to do market studies. Lack of advancement opportunities, we understand the need to focus on career development. Work-related stress and burnout with the new provider we brought in for employee worker assistance is targeted in both of those areas. How do we help employees navigate both challenging personal and professional situations?
May I ask one other question?
Please.
On burnout, would that, some of that maybe be attributed to the unfilled funded positions where staff is overburdened? I mean, because I know we have quite a few of those, and I know we're filling them now with our increased attainment of employees, but would some of that maybe be attributed to that, or is it just plain old, I don't like it anymore, I quit, goodbye?
Chairman Sertie, Supervisor McClure, my response needs to be clarified with, it's anecdotal. I have not done the analysis, but certainly your hypothesis is well-stated. It's where the workload is increased, we have not kept pace with the need to fill all of the positions, and there are personal challenges as well as professional challenges are stretching individuals thin. So it's a combination of factors.
This is a place where I'd like to ask, I was approached by an employee not so much about having like a whistleblower about wrongdoing in the workforce, but where to go with concerns of unfairness without having any retaliation from superiors, et cetera. How is that all handled?
Chairman Sertie, thank you for raising that question in this context, because it allows me to reinforce why we're emphasizing the employee experience and how it is beyond pay and even learning opportunities. It's can you come to work and be safe in expressing your concerns and sharing the challenges that you have? We have more work to do in this area. We, I'm going to speak to it in two ways. By providing the new employee assistance worker assistance program that we have offered, we're now offering a external source to help people understand the challenges this work and how to best navigate them and get clarity on what those are. That's important. But also, something that has been developed in partnership with IT but not yet implemented is a anonymous vehicle by which employees can raise concerns, workplace concerns, not fraud like is covered under silent whistle, but workplace concerns with HR so they can be addressed. I have to be honest and say it's been developed but not yet implemented, because in order to implement it, we need staff to be responsive. I think the worst thing we could do is say you can complain and no one does anything. So those, that focus and all the efforts are happening at the same time. The vehicle's been created for an anonymous concern complaint information sharing line. We are working on staffing to support that so that there will be attention paid and response. We're not there yet. And then one final thing, in this budget, we requested an additional position that really is going to focus on the more significant complaints or concerns that employees have. And the intent is to position someone, a unit outside of HR, that would be responsible for taking in serious concerns and complaints and investigating those.
But not the county attorney's office, some other outside.
Where this would be positioned?
Right.
Chairman Sertie, Supervisor Kavanaugh, and that's a great question, and my honest answer is, we haven't decided where it would best land. We know it really shouldn't be in HR because HR supports managers and employees, and we don't want them conflicted. The county attorney is already available to assist us and build in our policies.
Had a good idea.
Appreciate, but they have a role, so to create this unit where it is neutral and employees are able to bring concerns and to the extent possible have their confidentiality preserved, that's where we haven't quite landed, to be very honest. But we acknowledge the concerns about the confidentiality and the safe space.
I was not going to go here. You've answered my questions where I was going, but for instance, we spent hours talking about the election this morning. There's a lot of temporary contract work there, and I know for a fact that one raised an issue during the last election, was then told, I guess you don't really want to work here then, just by daring to see something, say something type situation, and elections are coming up again. So that whole, you know, those are part-time workers that come and go, so they need to be protected also for, like I said, say something, see something.
Chairman Sertie, absolutely, and our county manager has made it clear that we need to pull not only internal but external resources to come in and train, coach, and mentor supervisors, managers, leaders in how to, how to best create environments where employees want to come to work and can do their best work. So it's not done yet. There are many facets that we're focusing on in HR. All of them are priorities, but to your point, helping our supervisors and managers be more effective in creating an environment and a quality employee experience is priority. Providing employees with a voice to share concerns that they don't have to fear a negative response is also critical. These pieces are in process. Candidly, they're not done yet, but our commitment to you and to every employee listening is to make it happen.
Thank you.
And I'm going to ask Colleen to come up and wrap up, and then I will lead into the ask about the compensation plan.
Thank you, Mary Ellen, Chairman Sertie, members of the board. In conclusion, we would like to emphasize the comprehensive nature of our plan. These are initiatives and how they all tie together to enhance our employee value proposition and position us as an employer of choice. This HR model encompasses competitive compensation, growth opportunities, a positive and purposeful work environment, recognition and reward, work-life balance, training and development, the succession planning, and comprehensive well-being offerings, all of which, by the way, organically increases our employee referrals. By aligning all of these components, we attract and retain top talent and ultimately drive success in all of our departments. We've started this journey in positioning ourselves as an employer of choice. It will take all of us, though, working together to continually improve the Penao County employee experience. As we continue to focus on these areas, we are confident in our ability to strengthen our workforce, enhance employee satisfaction, and provide the best service to our community. Thank you.
Our employee, our candidates' expectations have changed. The work and the way we work has changed. We have to change with it. All of these efforts are intended to move us in that direction. We thank you for your support, and we thank the leaders in the county who have stepped up and understand the way we have done business in the past will not suffice moving forward. We're here, all of this is leading to our employee compensation plan for this fiscal year. We are presenting a similar plan to what we have in the last couple of years because we hope, as the data shows, things we are doing have had a positive result. We are attracting more applicants. We are hiring more people. We have expanded our workforce. We are reducing turnover. In the areas we have concentrated our efforts are, have had fairly significant reductions in turnover. We want to continue what works and continue expanding on what we know we need to do. So in this plan, it represents what we've done in the past with some additional modifications, primary of which I know is important, is seeking the 5% across the board increase. Again, that is based upon our survey and understanding of what other counties are doing and our competitors are doing. The salary increases being proposed by our local cities and towns in other counties range from between 0 and 10%. On average, the across-the-board increases, COLAS, in our comparators and competitors is 4% with an approximate 1% performance-based increase. Our 5% ask combines the two for all of our eligible employees. In the plan, we've also introduced some more creative innovative ways to recruit and retain. We are asking for the opportunity in critical areas when a business case is made to allow for such thing as sign-on bonuses and retention bonuses if someone stays for the year and completes that first year successfully. We've included in their employee referral bonuses or awards. And the idea behind that, again, is it takes all of us to recruit and connect, especially with those who aren't seeking new jobs called passive candidates, those we want to reach out to. But we're proposing that employees who bring on individuals into our family would also receive a monetary award, and if the individual they brought on stays for the year, that they would benefit again. So it's the commitment to bring on and the commitment to support individuals so they stay with us. We have included in the plan as well continuation with market studies. As the data shows, where we've done concentrated market studies to bring our grades and pay consistent with our competitors, we have seen positive results. We need to continue that to include employees' direct reports of elected officials, so we have a comprehensive plan that touches all of our employees in the county. So with that, do you have any questions?
Do we have any questions or discussion?
Mr. Chairman, may I?
Yes.
Thank you. I think we talked about this maybe a year or two ago, exit interviews, six months after someone left. I have, I didn't refer to my notes before this meeting. Do you recall having that conversation?
Chairman Sertie, Supervisor Kavanaugh, I honestly don't recall specifically, but nor is it foreign to me that we haven't had conversations about exit interviews.
So, and the slide was up about people who leave because of compensation, and I know Supervisor Miller often talks about, you know, the pay is here is great when the economy's down, but among those people who left because of compensation, how long were they here? If they were here a short period of time, they're saying it's compensation, but it's likely something else because the compensation was, you know, they knew what it was when you came in the door, and they didn't gain a bunch of skills in the six or 12 months they were here. So did you examine that?
Chairman Sertie, Supervisor Kavanaugh, your point is well-spoken. We know that compensation will be listed as the reason for leaving, in part because it's safe to state and not burn a bridge. And to your point, yes, people come on board knowing what the compensation is, so if they are leaving within that first year, something else is likely going on. What we have found, and we need to do a lot more analysis, but what we've found is we're continuing to lose individuals prior to that three-to-five-year mark, which communicates, and again, this is the hypotheses, I don't have the concrete analysis to really stand behind this statement, but what it seems to communicate is, at the point when someone is fully trained, competent, then they are very marketable with our other agencies. And so we need to pay attention to pay at that point. And as we've talked about previously, our current grades, it takes far too long to get to the midpoint, and the midpoint is where the market pays for someone proficient, and we're not there. So that's an area we must continue to focus on, so that pay is a factor, and it's a factor because we're not keeping pace with the employees' skills and paying accordingly. So we have to move employees quicker in the pay range to a competitive wage.
And going back to the issue of the county attorney's office, having complaints funnelled through there, the county attorney's office has an obligation to protect the county from fin- financial harm. But if an issue is brought to the attention of the county attorney, that then could result in financial harm to the county, then that's sort of a built-in conflict. I would like to see as concerns funneled outside the county to, as an independent helpline or whatever it is that you said earlier, rather than funnelled through the county attorney's office.
Chairman Sirti, Supervisor Kavanaugh, point taken. Please allow me to clarify, there are multiple forms and avenues in which complaints and concerns can be raised. So as you're aware, we have the Silent Whistle, which is the external audit group that takes serious complaints of fraud, et cetera. That's one avenue. What we are proposing is to expand our internal resources that make it easier for employees to bring concerns before they become big problems, and that we would be responsive and intervene early. So that's through the HR internal anonymous avenue to raise a concern so we could check in early, do something early, and then the new unit, which would address the more critical with a person trained and knowledgeable to respond appropriately and effectively. All of this would be in partnership with the goal of a safe place to have concerns addressed early and effectively. But none of that would prevent the external Silent Whistle opportunity avenue for those that are more serious as well.
Any more questions? Mr. Supervisor Miller, do you have any, do you want to weigh in?
There we go. Had to get the mute off. No, that's good.
Okay.
Very comprehensive.
All right. Are we, are we ready for motion?
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
I move that we approve item 24 as presented.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any opposed? Ayes have it.
Thank you.
The next is a public hearing, discussion, approval, disapproval, and accordance for the tax, taxing. Might be unfair that we spent so much time on another subject this morning, otherwise I think we'd have had a more people in the crowd to talk about this. Angie, open it up.
Good afternoon again, Chairman Sirti, members of the board. Angie Woods, Director of the Office of Budget and Finance. I have a short presentation today highlighting some of the things that are included in the fiscal year 2324 budget, and obviously, there's also a public hearing component to this item. Before I get into the presentation, I wanted to take a moment to follow up on a comment or question, I think, that Supervisor Kavanaugh had at the tentative budget adoption, if that's okay.
Yes.
Thank you for allowing me to take the time and look into the specifics regarding Fund 49, so that I could provide an accurate answer to you all. Fund 49 belongs to our Recorder's Office. The title of that fund is Recorder Storage. Dana Lewis is currently responsible for the revenues and expenditures of that fund. The fund is established due to ARS 11-475, which allows the Recorder's Office to let, collect fees for recording papers required or authorized by law to be recorded. The fees are, that are accounted for within that Fund 49 are a result of a $1 fee for preparing and certifying the record and a $3 fee for attaching the recorder's certificate and seal to the record. So every single document, essentially $3, is going into this fund. And therefore, the revenue that is collected is dependent specifically on the number of documents that are recorded. So times when we're having maybe a lot of refinancing or property purchases, the revenue is significantly high, and other times it will dip because of the market. The Recorder's Office currently uses the fees to pay for some staff, some operational costs, and equipment dedicated specifically to document storage. The reason that there's a variance between the budget and what's actually spent is, is our recorder is being prudent in monitoring those expenses that are happening there. Therefore, they have money to operate in the future when maybe the revenue is on the decline. So that's why Supervisor Kavanaugh, that when you saw the budget, it was a higher number. The actual for the current year was a lower number, yet we're budgeting again a higher number because there's actually cash in that fund that can be utilized in future years.
Thank you. Appreciate that. And I think one of my other assistants called, rather than the recorder, called another office who didn't recognize it, just dialed the wrong number, and that started the...
Yeah, that's correct. Originally, when you had spoke of the item, it was the Clerk of the Superior Court, Rebecca Padilla, and so I had to go roundabout kind of to figure out what was really actually happening. So I appreciate the time and allowing me to take to give you an accurate answer. With that, I'd like to go into this, it's a very short presentation, some of the slides of which were presented at the adoption of the tentative budget. So this pie chart has not changed. We have had a few minor changes to the budget schedules between the tentative budget and today's final budget. However, the percentages are exactly the same as the tentative budget, so very minor changes that happened in the total. Same thing here on the revenue side, exactly the same pie chart, none of the revenue has significantly changed. And distribution of the funds, again, has not significantly changed. Therefore, the pie chart remains exactly the same. We like to, during the final adoption, give you some highlights of some of the things that are included in the budget. For our facilities project, projects that are budgeted this fiscal year 2324, we have a San Manuel PCSO renovation, and our elections building, the rendering, the middle picture on here is a rendering of what the elections building might look like after completion. We have some budgeted for Florence Admin Complex, Fleet and Facilities Maintenance Campus. We have budgeted Oracle Public Health renovation, some renovations to the Adult Detention Center, PODS B and C, and our Animal Care and Control renovation, which is the floor plan there is the very last picture on the slide. So for open space and trails projects included in our budget is Dinosaur Park Playground, Dudleyville Park improvements, some improvements in our San Manuel Community Center, Santan Valley Conceptual Park Planning Phase Two, Superstition Mountain Area Trail Access Planning, some improvements at our fairgrounds, and improvements at our West Penile Park. Included in the budget under our transportation projects, obviously, this morning, we received a check for 87.5 million dollars. That has been budgeted in this year's final budget. In addition to that, there's projects for Thornton Road, improvements surrounding Proctor and Gamble, so it's the...
What was that number again?
87.5 million.
Why does that number keep coming up? That's the third time today, isn't it? That's how big the big check was. That's how much is in the fund, in the tax amount, and now that...
That amount here is that...
It'll be on my Powerball ticket tonight.
Yeah.
That amount is that 87.5 million in my presentation. It is the check that was presented this morning.
Okay, never mind.
So, yeah, it's the exact same thing. It's just included in our budget so that we can start that project. In addition to that, they have projects for Mount Lemon Highway Extension, Hunt Highway Phase Five, and then East-West Corridor, there was a $9 million in state appropriations that we've included in our budget for the transportation projects. So under flood control, there's a great variety of things going on here. I don't know if you necessarily want me to read everything on the slide, but, you know, some highlights, El Camino Viejo Bridge Replacement, Robertson Thompson Drainage, Design and Land Acquisition, Bonanza Ranch Phase One, Welton Wash Improvements, Dirt Springs Regional Basin Construction, Greenlee Wash Watershed Plan, and the Guild Wash Watershed Plan. So some of the things that are going on in our flood control. At our airport, we, they are going to begin perimeter fencing project at the San Manuel Airport. There are runway improvement construction project going to close at the Penile Air Park, and they're going to acquire some land for runway safety area at the Penile Air Park. So our general fund revenue budget hasn't changed at all. We didn't make any significant changes here, so exactly the same as what I showed you a couple of weeks ago at the tentative budget. And then the distribution of the general fund, there were some minor changes that happened through there, but didn't significantly change the way in which the pie chart is distributed. So that brings me to one of my last slides. So this action item is to approve the fiscal year 2324 budget, the amount of $1,216,73,46. And the increase of about 4.6 million from prior year is mainly related to transportation-related We did notice our public for, in compliance with Arizona State Revised Statutes 4217107, we notified our property taxpayers of our intention to raise primary property taxes over last year's level. The proposed increase that was stated in the paper is $5,355,235, which is 4.81%. The property tax on a $100,000 home is $356. If we would have left the, if the proposed tax increase wouldn't have been increased, it would have been 100, on a $100,000 home, the tax bill would be $339.66, which is a difference of $16.34.
So, for folks not really tuning in, that's $17 on 100,000.
Thousand dollar home.
And if we say the average home in Penile County is 400,000, then they'd be paying $80,000, $80 more.
Yeah, I don't know what the average home in Penile County is.
But if it was...
But that's the assessed price, not the, not the value at sale, that's the assessed value.
Yeah.
You'd have to talk to Wolf about that.
Yeah, so there is a difference between the full cash value.
So it won't even go up $80? Yes, okay. But I do have some things I want to throw in. Like I said, I expected a full house of people protesting a tax increase. And the first, very first call to the public this morning was about taxes and not the election, which was a sigh of relief, but, and she said, why shouldn't new growth pay for itself? And how many different ways can new growth pay? One is impact fees, but being a businessman, I know that if you put more fees on the builders and the people building, then they kind of shy away and they'll go somewhere else where there's not. So one of the ways is to, with property taxes, and I just want to, for future discussion, future budgets, Apache Junction has the D.R. Horton Project, which is huge down Ironwood, I mean, 6,000 acres. And all the people moving in there, there will be a CFD district, meaning going in, those people know that if they live there, they have a property tax that the rest of the county doesn't have. Someone from Oracle or San Manuel shouldn't have to pay for the new roads that are happening in the new growth areas. So I would like the staff and county to consider, on these larger projects, that they pay for themselves with CFDs. And that's the understanding that once that part of superstition visas gets built out and it moves further to the east, there would be a different CFD there. Those folks would be paying a different rate of property taxes than those that are in established area with the, that's been that way forever. So I just want everyone to consider that.
That's a good, I agree. I think that's a good item for a future discussion, as, as bring that back up. But yeah, I'd really like to see us do something like that. Makes a lot of sense.
Any other comments?
But with this, if I could, just to add to what you, some of the things have already been stated in some of the discussions we've had as a board from previous discussions on this, we're a never-changing county, and I appreciate the fact that we've decided to hold because we have a lot of additional things that need to be met and dealt with. For instance, we just had the presentation on bringing our compensation up to where we're competitive. We have some of these projects that are out there that are one-time cash investments, which means that we've got the cash to do it. We're not going out and bonding to make some of this happening. So from a business standpoint, that's, that makes sense, and it's prudent that we do it that way. And so that's why I'm in favor of this, and so, but we got a public hearing, right?
Mr. Chair, may I just say, to your point, Supervisor Goodman, that, you know, we have to be careful, because we've had previous decreases in the tax rate, but some of that, I mean, quite honestly, I feel it's like a dart throw. It's like, hey, how about 4 cents? How about 6 cents? And we're looking now at what the county needs, what it actually costs to operate, what we need to fill the positions, the compensation package, all that, our growth, and taking that into account, the infrastructure that's needed. And we need the infrastructure in place before the growth happens so that we're able to deal with that growth. And I think that's very important. And we don't want to arbitrarily lower rates to turn around and raise our rates, maybe in a couple of years because something happens. So I think we're being very careful and prudent about that in a business fashion. You know, it helps our, it helps our, you know, lowering and raising would be bad for economic growth, but also business interests because they're looking for some stability there. And I think if we're careful at our lowering of rates, that in the long term, we will be able to lower the rates, but we just have to be careful how we do it.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
Thank you. So we're in the era of Bidenomics. The inflation is, is high, you know, and I'll think a lady this morning, one of the comments was, why are you raising taxes? We're not raising taxes. We understand that the property values are going up, therefore, we're collecting more, therefore, it indicates an increase in taxes, the truth in taxation. So we need to get that message out very clearly through our social media and other media for the citizens. We're not raising rates, we're keeping the rates the same. And I agree with Supervisor McClure that we have to be wise and, and set money aside for bigger projects that are coming and sort of anticipate this. And when, perhaps when we're past the Bidenomics period, we'll have a different, a different opportunity to lower taxes and get it down to the state rate. What is the, what is the, what is the rate called where you don't have to...
The truth in taxation rate.
Yeah, okay, the TNT rate.
TNT.
TNT. Thank you.
And if I might comment, yes, you're correct, Supervisor Kavanaugh, we're not increasing the rate. It is the valuation that is causing the, this, this particular public hearing.
So this is a public hearing, would anyone like to talk on this issue? Here again, seeing none. Hearing and seeing none. Back to us for one last discussion. If not, I'll ask for a motion.
Mr. Chair, I'd like to make a motion that we approve item number 25 as presented.
Second.
All in favor? This is a roll call.
Supervisor Miller?
Aye.
Supervisor Kavanaugh?
Aye.
Supervisor Goodman?
Aye.
Vice Chairman McClure?
Aye.
Chairman Sertie?
Aye.
That motion passes unanimously.
Future discussion for future agenda items. That department head just got here, he missed the whole discussion. Did you see that? See him sneak in? Go ahead.
You know, a couple of weeks ago, in the Santan Valley area, we had a group of volunteers come and clean up the parking lot around the Home Depot. And it was, the audacity of people is amazing to me. Literally, a lot of garbage is accumulated right there in the center of the hub of that complex. And it was, I don't know how many trailer loads that was, ended up hauling out, I think it was four or five. We, how much garbage? We probably had 40 people out there helping us move all this stuff. I drove by there yesterday. I, I went over there a week ago, and somebody had dumped off more mattresses. I had my grandsons help me load it up. We hauled it off. I drove by there yesterday, and again, it's already starting to, we've had discussions about some kind of a reward system. I really, really, especially when they're that abrasion, and they're doing it right there in our community rather than, the desert's bad enough, but the work, anyway, I really would like to see us have some kind of a discussion to where there's a reward system for this type of behavior. It's ridiculous.
Anyone else? I need a motion to convene into executive session.
Mr. Chair, I move that we convene to executive session.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Come out of executive session.
Mr. Chairman, I move we adjourn executive session.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? We adjourn. Leo, are you leaving?
Leo, up or down?